A long time ago.
The 625, are those in this packet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those are in the...
These are not because...
The 625 is not, the 79 is.
That's amazing.
I think we... Yes, I'd like one.
Sorry. Yeah, this is totally, totally new. Fred, hot off presses.
We're a little discombobulated, I think, today. All right, I'm gonna bring the meeting to order, are we good? Okay.
Let's do it.
Hello and welcome to the Select Board meeting. Today is October 15th, 2019. We're being broadcast on Comcast, Channel 22, and Verizon, Channel 23. Today on the... or, excuse me, 33. Today on the agenda will have liaison reports, followed by the Town Manager Report and Public Comment. The agenda today has... we'll be approving a Select Board appointee to the Retirement Board to speak on a town meeting article. The Town Accountant will be providing the quarterly report. We'll discuss a tax titled "Property." We have a hearing on the agenda to review the Select Board liquor policy changes, but we will be opening that hearing and then postponing it to a future date. We'll be sending up... signing a land purchase document, approving the Town Manager goals, and Town Manager annual review format. We'll be making a slight change to the Select Board policy regarding the number of members on HREC and voting on the November Town warrant articles. And last, we will discuss Select Board goals. So with that, let's have liaison reports. Anne, why don't you kick us off?
Okay. I attended last week the Wakefield Board of Appeals hearing on the Tarrant Lane development, and the board did vote to grant the comprehensive permit to Tarrant Lane Development pursuant to 40B, 173 unit building. And they may make slight changes to health and safety to the draft decision that they approved. But so that appears to be moving forward.
Anything else?
I think that was my main...
Come on.
Two quick things. So I attended with Bob the statewide municipal partnerships conference last week that was held at Holy Cross, which was great. I got to meet some other Town Managers, Administrators, which was wonderful. But the presentation from the state was very interesting. They've launched a new website whose goal is to make it easy to find grants for different things. You can even get it set it up so it'll push out what things are going on. So when there's a new grant opportunity, it'll push out, which sounded really interesting. A particular interest to me was there was a discussion of older communities, and I met some interesting folks on that that I'll be able to follow up with for some other activities. So I thought it was very worthwhile, half day. This morning, I attended, it was a meeting DOT and Town Staff to discuss the road diets. And the gist of it was that DOT is in fact open to discussing the south side of town as well as the north side of town. Timing would be kind of spring, summer-ish, kind of actually mid-June activities of next year with a goal of making sure that school is in session when they'd be doing their measurement period. And they would do a test of about six to eight weeks of the diet. The diet would set up to one lane going each way, a center lane for turns, but also bike lanes on either side of the road, on both sides of the road. The DOT folks seemed very receptive to the whole discussion. Julie did a great job coordinating the meeting and kind of guiding it and making sure that the evaluation period would work well. There were few outside folks, Eric Blodgett was there, Dave Talbot was there. And there was a... obviously, the Town Staff was there. I thought the meeting was great, the DOT folks were very receptive. And there's a follow-up meeting next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Kind of the next step to go work on more of the details. More of the engineering staff from DOT will be in attendance as well.
Great. I'll piggyback on that before I jump to Andy. I had actually reached out to the state a couple of weeks ago, and they were very, to your point, very receptive along with pursuing the trial. They did let me know that the temporary lanes will go in as they were pre... before the repaving, which means four lanes, two in each direction, to get us through the winter. And then come the spring, we can... after discussions happen about the road diet, we'll see whether or not they end up getting paved with the diet itself.
Sorry, yeah, I figured just that one more thing. There was a lot of discussion about how and when to notify the community. It's still TBD, but the notion of there'd be information that could go on the website. In fact, I think they said they'll do something.
They'll build a website and, yeah, send us a link.
Yeah, which will be great. And then a discussion of the folks that would be interested around March, which would still have pretty good lead time, but hopefully after snow, and a good chance to meet with folks.
I also spoke with Jason Lewis and his staff, and they were supportive of the town in this as well. So thanks, Sir Jason Lewis and his staff.
So is Jason's Policy Director, Emily was there, and Brad Jones attended as well.
Oh, okay, great.
So I just wanted to bring attention to three emails that we received in our packet. And just to check to see with whomever that they're being followed up on, because as you know, we don't reply individually as a board except Anne's acknowledgement, right?
Mark's...
Oh, Mark does acknowledge, sorry. So the first one was a couple of emails from residents about their concerns about cars idling too long, specifically outside the train station, where you get a lot of people coming off and going by when these cars have been idling for a long time. And another one about cars idling outside of Killam School for lengthy periods. And I know we have signs of around the schools, but not idling. And I was hoping that we could enforce that in some way or get the message across to people that they need to turn off their engines because the exposure to the car exhaust, obviously for kids and adults, is a health concern.
Bob, do we have no idling signs outside the train depot?
No. So PTTF tackled the school issue, and the schools are aware. We've not talked about the train station one yet.
We used to have it at the back door here, it's running now with the...
I think it's still there, I'm not sure. The five-minute spot has, I think, that has a sign.
Five minutes, if that has one, I don't know?
Yeah.
Something for their consideration for next time.
Yeah.
I mean, the train station, the problem is people back in, including me, to pick up their whomever. And then there is this cloud develops of exhaust around that area. And then there was a concern about cars parking on the sidewalk to drop off their kids at the Killam School, and a concern that there was some... this created some danger, dangerous conditions to parents and kids alike that are using the sidewalk. Finally, another one, someone brought up, again, the lighting at the softball fields at Birch Meadow, safety issues, and the softball teams don't have a place to practice, I guess, with lighting. So I wanted to call attention to that. And then I... just to let you know, I met with John Watson, the Chair of... Weston, sorry, the Chair of the CPDC, to talk about Airbnbs, the problem of the Airbnbs. I won't get into the details now, but I'd be happy to report on that. And lastly today, I went to a multi-town initiative on natural gas leaks with the... it was both with many towns and also with a number of people from National Grid, including their president, so.
So, Andy, I was... what was the result of your conversation with Mr. Weston? What are the next steps there?
Sure, so he... I'll be... I'll try to be brief. He said, he sort of discussed that to sort of find out how pervasive the practice of buying a unit solely to use it as an Airbnb, how pervasive that problem is. One idea would be to look at Burlington, who's put up... who they put up a number of multi-unit housing. So just sort of decide, is it really a large problem in Redding that we want to... if that we want to regulate? And then as far as the regulation side of it, he thought that this might be an issue better handled by the private sector than the government sector. Because if you think of it, if a resident buys a unit in one of these multi-residential complexes and next door they have, someone's bought a unit for Airbnb purposes, and there's a lot of in and out, people they don't know, their first recourse would be go to the building owner or the building manager and complain that... about the conditions. And that perhaps this was a building manager or building owner's problem to be sorted out rather than them to... So just some thoughts.
Any other questions on that? Mind you, it's not on the agenda, so. If we want to discuss Airbnb more, we can put it on the chart in.
Okay, just hoping here from the liaison report. And just, and also, I don't know if Bob wants to respond to the different... the status of the different email responses that you mentioned, maybe during the Town Manager Report, but you kind of raised a... you raised a number of things, but for us to close the loop on those.
On...
Those emails that you...
So, Bob, can I ask you just something on those once you've pointed them out?
I think I answered the two car idling, the cars parked at Killam.
Yes.
We did discuss that at PTTF. There are some small mitigation measures that we can take. It's fairly steep in one point, but to actually put in granite curbing would cause a far worse problem. It would move the cars further out into the street and be a lot more hazardous for the kids that are trying to cross the street and get out of a car. So that discouraging them from going closer to the off-road is not the best idea. Every elementary school has the same issue, it's not just Killam. The drop-off and pickup patterns are random, sometimes chaotic. I will read something from Selectman Halsey that will address the softball fields after my report.
Thank you. So my only other item to add is why to actually. So I did speak to the DOT, we had some questions about the work that had been done behind Walnut Street, and now lighting is shining down into neighbors' yards. They had said they will look into that. Bob says he hasn't heard anything, so if that continues to be the case, I'll reach back out.
Okay.
But they said they did want to be good neighbors, and they don't guarantee anything, but they'll definitely look into it. And the other thing is John, his having regular Select Board office hours at the Senior Center the second Tuesday of every month at 11:00 a.m., and that will start this month. Okay, yeah, okay.
Quick comment on that. So I held office hours a couple of weeks ago at the library, and it was advertised on the website and I guess in social media as well. And I had people lined up before I arrived.
Really?
Really.
Yeah, so I thought it was quite good. And so, you know, three people in total, just to be clear, wasn't overwhelming.
Three people more than we normally get for office hours, so I'll take that as a win.
Uh, no pitchforks.
Good.
All right, so, wonderful. And we hit agendas, we should probably schedule a few more office hours. All right, public comment. All right, so if... who would like to make a... oh, yes, Bob.
Do you want my report?
Oh, did I skip you? Oh, I absolutely...
I can wait till Bill's...
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Bill, sorry. All right, I might answer your question, Bill, one never knows.
The list is long this week.
I have a couple of short ones and a little bit longer than one. Early this morning, Lieutenant Detective Abadi and I visited two liquor license establishments, which finished off our work over almost a two-week period. Thanks certainly to Jackie and Caitlin, but also Aaron Schaefer, Matt Cronellis, and various police officers, was a team effort to go out there in a short amount of time. We gave them the schedule of meetings now tonight. We did send them an email today that it would change. From my personal experience, every license holder applauded you for the possible changes you were making in terms of having things on file at all times. They thought that was perfectly reasonable. They do that themselves, they just don't share it with us. So, you know, they're also very responsible about what their liability is. I have a reimagined Redding survey, not an answer or a result, but it was very nice. Over 1,500 responses were received.
Wow.
So more on this, but that's an interesting... I call it a Venn diagram, whatever it is. It's got a lot of interesting words, word salad. On October 4th, on a Friday, I went to a legislative breakfast meeting in Linfield. Representative Lewis sent an aide, Representative Jones was there. The Senate had just finished the education bill the night before, so Jason wasn't able to come. There's a lot of discussion about the education bill. And let's just say there's two wide schools, if you will, have thought of what the impact on Redding is. One school is not very much, and one is maybe as much as 2.5% a year, but nothing that's just outrageously good news, but, you know, not too bad. In terms of special education and circuit breaker funding, the news was very good for Redding. It will be fully funded, at least in the first year, and hopefully thereafter, which is a few hundred thousand dollars to the school budget, which is very helpful. Last week, we got an unexpected opportunity to be one of the four locations in the country where the EPA announced their new rules for lead and copper in the drinking water. I kicked off a press conference by stating that, quote, "In order to be an efficient and effective smaller community, we in Redding believe that gathering all town and school departments together monthly to discuss routine matters puts us in the best position to handle emergencies well." When we heard the news, the testing resulted in lead in the water at some locations in our schools. Myself, Dr. Doherty, and members from our facilities and public work staff gathered later, turned out on a Friday night. We didn't need to waste any time introducing each other or stepping each other's toes. We just immediately set to solve the problem, and no one went home that night until we felt we had a good plan of action. EPA Region 1 Administrator Dennis DeZiel said that, quote, "Redding was chosen as a site for the press conference to recognize its role as a model of leadership protesting water in the schools and responding to drinking water issues," unquote. Mass Treasurer, State Treasurer Deb Goldberg said that she was very impressed with the reaction and that, quote, "Redding has hit it out of the park." So I just want to emphasize to the community that when safety of our students is in question, your staff in the town and the schools get it right. And I'm very proud of the response and the fact that that's how we're set up, is to deal with things like this, just through doing routine work. Lastly, I just want to remind the board that you're posted tomorrow night at 7:00 for the financial forum in the library. That's all I have, thanks.
And is that at 7:00, not 7:30?
Correct. Is that what we did? There's been some questions, but yeah, Finn Cum wanted to meet a little earlier. I can read the comment from Selectman Halsey, or wait for Mr. Brown.
Why don't you go ahead, Bill?
Okay, sorry, Bill. This is Board Member Comment, John Halsey, October 15th. "Since I am unable to participate in tonight's meeting, I thought it was important to share some thoughts regarding a citizen letter we all received late last week. A situation regarding safety and a current hazardous situation at the high school softball field at Birch Meadow was brought to our attention. His letter paid particular attention to both player benches and the outdated condition of the playing surface. Both of these situations are a valid concern. Of special note to me is the, quote, 'player protection,' unquote, surrounding the player bench area in the field in question. I'm very familiar with this dangerous situation since frankly there is absolutely no player protection in the bench areas. The close proximity of the benches to home plate and the absence of any protective fencing or dugouts is extremely dangerous to players of all ages, in my opinion. This has been a concern of mine at many of our baseball and softball venues in town, and thankfully, most of these situations have been remedied by various parent and user league groups, strictly with private funding. Such an offer was made for this venue as well as... as well by the Redding Little League Softball League. They were discouraged to do anything since the unusually protracted, quote, Birch Meadow Committee, has still not finalized its recommendation for the entirety of the Birch Meadow complex. Accordingly, the league addressed a similar hazardous situation at Sturgis Park and created a nice facility, which I'm sure you've seen. As a board, we're responsible for public safety of all citizens regardless of age. Also the parks, including their upkeep and condition. We're also responsible for protecting the town in these situations that create potential liability. A threat in all three of these areas of concern are present in the aforementioned situation at Birch Meadow. I feel strongly that we should take a lead as a board and fulfill our responsibilities in this situation before another softball season at this field commences. Costs to resolve this are manageable, and I would argue that the monies in the Recreation Revolving Fund should be applied immediately to resolve this situation. Sharon can determine how valid that is. These monies are earmarked for use first to cover the expensive of programs and facilities that are incurred for rentals. Only then should the balance of these funds be returned to the town's general fund." So just for the board's knowledge, this is a revolving fund, unlike some others at the schools, where at the end of a year, fiscal year, all but $10,000 are returned to the general fund. $10,000 is kept over to get the summer going and have some seed money for expenses. I don't remember recent years, but returning $100,000 was not unusual for years for the revolving fund. Lastly, I have shared, this is John speaking, "I have shared my thoughts with the Chair in this matter during discussion of our agenda and my role as Vice Chair. I felt in the interest of closely observing open meeting laws and everyone's ability to represent their own thoughts, I have asked the Town Manager to read this to the board in my absence. I feel this is an urgent matter, and delaying to our next meeting would not be in anyone's best interests. We have time and resources to solve this problem before winter weather would prevent the work. The spring conditions could easily not allow for a solution before the softball season starts for all the users of this field at Birch Meadow. Thank you for your attention, respectfully submitted, John Halsey." And we'll have to make sure that goes in the minutes.
Bob, I'd actually spoken with Softball League about this very issue. Is it in the capital plan for that fencing to be installed?
It's really hard to say because there's $1 million in the capital plan for Birch Meadow field improvements, but we don't know what that is. That's for the Recreation Committee to determine. So I can't say what their thoughts or plans are. I don't, I just don't know.
I went to, I think their last meeting the subcommittee had. It's been a while, but I think the plan is fairly well shaped up and that they want to present it. As liaison, I'd be happy to reach out to Recreation Committee and give them a sense of what the board is feeling when I get that sense. I mean, I understand John's, where John is coming from, but if the board agrees with John's sentiments, I'd be happy to work through the Recreation.
I've talked to them about their priorities as well last year. Cold case, so maybe we can bring it up there next meeting, mention it to their Chair for their discussion.
Do the other Select Board members...
I would want to know what they're, because there may be other safety issues. I don't know what their priorities are, and so before... I can't speak for anybody else, but before we say this is a priority for us, I'd be curious to know what they're, because they have a more holistic view on what all the needs are.
Yes.
For field space or other facilities, so.
Yeah.
One fact I do know is that they're requesting some funds at November Town meeting to do some design work, so they're a ways off from some work or solutions, just so you know.
So a couple of questions. One, I don't seem to be a copy of this note.
It just came in at like...
No, not John's note, the one he referred to, you all received.
It went to the board within the last day or two, so it's not in the packet because it didn't come in in time.
But it came in on Thursday, and it was an attachment.
Oh, they didn't make it in the very last...
Yes, it's in the packet.
You must have really... it was right at the end of the day.
Yes, very last page of your packet. The last, of course, one. All right, so...
Continue, so I'm... so this is a hard one. It feels like we're... it might be good to have the Rec Committee spending some time with us and having a discussion in a public meeting. Because there seem to be a number of issues that demand attention that aren't getting addressed. Not the least of which, I mean, we have some things that are on future agendas. We had the discussion when they came into the meeting a couple of weeks ago. I'm just, I'm hesitant to kind of select A and not B and C. It seems like we have a bunch of issues that we should work through with them.
So let's table this for the end of the meeting, before we talk about future agendas. Now we can decide how to proceed. All right, great.
Vanessa. I'm not killing you, it's okay.
Still only 4:30.
This is just a brief, it's only 4:30. This is just a brief question that came up when I was reading the minutes for October 27th. I was reminded that two restaurants recently received liquor violations for serving minors. My question is, did they... did one of the, one or both violate our policy? Like the liquor store that we recently...
Is that the one we had the meeting here about, or is it some...
No, this is about the state.
The ABCC?
The state, and caught two of them, so you have to read the state's report. To Andy's point...
Yeah, we are not allowed, when the ABCC contacts a field operation and find a violation, we are not allowed to pile on to that, if you will.
We are not.
No. So they will adjudicate that, they will send us the results.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Guys, stop.
Actually, related question, just so we're not allowed to pile on. Let's suppose that they determined there was a violation of state policy, I guess. They report that to us. And then let's suppose that we find in a separate incidence that there is a violation of our policies.
Yes. You are allowed to count that as a second offense.
Thank you.
Yep.
That was exactly the question.
And you can take into consideration the state's findings at your yearly renewals. You just can't give them a punishment based on the state's violation. But at the end of the year, you can, you're allowed to say that, oh, you did have a violation, it shouldn't be, that was from the state.
Thank you.
Bob, for those that have any violations, do we, do you provide a report to us? Because I remember last year, this was a pretty straightforward process, but this year we seem to have... keeping them behaving badly.
From what I've seen, they've slightly changed in how they notify us because they had made some errors before with the wrong address and wrong establishments. From what I've seen, we don't hear until they're finished now, and they've issued a penalty of some sort or a finding of some sort.
And is that provided to the town? And then do you then provide that to us?
Yes.
Okay.
And it takes usually many months.
Sounds about right, all right. Now are we done? Yeah, okay, all right. All right, moving on to public comments. Please raise your hand, provide your name and address. Hi, Bill. Please keep comments to topics under the purview of the board. Please no derogatory or campaign-related comments. All right, Bill.
I hope I'm never derogatory. Sometimes I'm not great, but that's all right. I remind the board that last year, we had an structural motion by Town Meeting to report on Memorial Park, which we didn't. I think we spend an excessive amount of time trying to circumvent the chatter on the human rights advisory board that they're trying to put together. And I'm concerned about the amount of money that they've been spent trying to circumvent the chatter. I think the other thing too, and you say within your jurisdiction, we've spent an awful lot of time here... lot of time hearing complaints on body B's and body A's, which are not under your jurisdiction, from the CPD or the government. In my opinion, you push this all onto the police station, police chief's selection, which is not under your jurisdiction by charter. And I think, and Mr. Ronbit suggests that you might want to get back on track and do your job, and as you should, by charter, and stay away from the, trying to be nice to people at body Bs and all of those sorts of things. That's my comment. Nothing personal, Johnny, if my observation is fit to understand. And I'm hearing a lot of grumbling in the background, and I won't tell you because I will not get that source to.
Thank you, Bob.
Just a little divided. I told you I'd take you to Woodchapel to get that.
All right, since there's no other public comment, we will move on to the first agenda item, which is, we need to approve a select board appointee to the retirement board. Bob?
Yeah, a couple of meetings ago, Sharon filed a form that she asked you to approve. Now Carol Roberts has filed the same form for a slightly different reason. Sharon is an employee of yours, and then Carol is an appointee of yours, but same end result. And this is again, in order to fully participate in discussions with FinCom, which may be largely done now by Town Meeting, which is in the future.
So, Mark, is that, I don't see the motion for that.
Oh, move to accept the filing by Carol Roberts. Let me get it up on the overhead here. So, move to approve the Form 268A, Section 19, as filed by Carol Roberts.
What he said.
So, moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Sharon Anstrom with our town accountant, part of the report.
Their packet is right here. It says packet.
When I get to like the news reports, I might want to refer to them there.
Yep.
So, hopefully, I won't take up too much of your time. I've got a lot in the packet, though. So, I figured I would start off and talk about the fiscal '19 close and where we are with the reporting of that year, and then I'll go into where we are for the fiscal '20 as of September 30th. And at the end of your packet, or at the end of my section of your packet, is the declaration of trust for the OPEB, and I'm going to that. So, first off, we closed fiscal '19 on September 6th. That is our typical timeline. We try and keep it open as long as possible because for whatever reason, we get a lot of late bills and we want to have proper cutoff. So, that's when we typically close, so we're pretty much on time with our cash standard. Once we're done with that, I move right into working on the end-of-year report for the school. So, there's a lot of expenses that are paid on the town side that are allocated to the schools for the end-of-year report, and that is due by September 30th, so that is top priority. As soon as I'm done closing the year, I start working on that report. And then once I'm done with that, I start working on free cash. So, I worked with my assistant town accountant, trying to get her involved in every aspect of this year and close, get her at least familiar. She probably won't be able to do it all herself because it's only done once a year, but just get her feeling familiar with where all the documents are kept, where, what are the reports we're running, and there's quite a bit. It's very involved. We did submit to DOR and are expecting our certification within the next 10 days, so hopefully, we'll get our final number. I don't like to quote the number because sometimes DOR will have some different use and deduct things for things maybe I wouldn't have deducted. So, I usually like to wait, get a final number so as not to confuse anyone. So, we are online to have our free cash certified in time for November Town Meeting, so there won't be an issue to use it. After that, we've started working on, Andrea and myself are working on salary projections to help the departments heads build their budgets for fiscal '21. Andrea is primarily working on it right now, I'm working on other things, and then we'll get together and review together. So, that's another thing that happens at year end. So, there's always that fiscal '19 close, fiscal '20 is open, and we're budgeting for fiscal '21, so there's almost always a lot going on. Once I'm done with that, I will be focused on the tax recap, that's setting the tax rate for fiscal '20. I can't really complete that process until November Town Meeting has happened because the votes of Town Meeting are included for November. So, we can't get it certified until after Town Meeting is closed in so many days before the certified articles are released to me. We have to have those articles to get it set, so it's usually sometime around the end of November, closer to the end of November that you'll see the tax rates set. Of course, Victor is always well ahead of me. He's got all his done, and he is all set to go. He's waiting for me to get all those numbers in there. We work together on that process, we make sure our numbers tie, and then we submit and the tax rate is set. So, that's where we're at now. And then the last part of the process for end-of-year reporting is the Schedule A, and that is the document we submit to DOR. They use that to compare communities and their financial status. So, a lot of times when you see documents that actually compare different communities, their revenues, all their different data, they get that from the Schedule A. And so, we have to submit that by November 30th. If you delay too long in putting that in, they can hold up your stage date, so you never want to be too late on that. So, we try and meet that deadline. Usually, they wouldn't do it unless they didn't have it by January, but I don't like to test them. I try and get it in on time. Again, I will involve the assistant town accountant in all these processes because they are once a year. She will only see them once a year, and I just want her to have familiarity, that somebody else knows how to do these documents, what reports need to be run, and all of that. So, that being said, the other thing that goes on at this time of year is the year-end audit, so fiscal '19 on September 10th. The auditors were out to start their preliminary audit work. They spent three days with us. I expect that we will see them sometime in the beginning of November to wrap up field work, and then hopefully, we'll get our reports sooner than later. I feel like they've gotten very, very busy. I think we're all on the same kind of timeline, and I feel like we get our audited financials just in time to do our continued disclosure, and it's, I think that they're working on several audits all at once, so it's one of those. I feel like we're seeing the statements come out later than we used to. I'm not sure why, but hopefully, they'll be done sometime in November. That's what I'm hoping. Other than that, I think that's pretty much everything for fiscal '19. In your packet, I think it's on the first 12 pages, on page, starting at 12, page 12, so I'm going to, wow, quite about here.
It said, you're right, so page 12. One more.
Here it is. And boy, is it small.
You can do the plus there, might help.
Use the plus.
To the right.
Makes it hard to see what's on the other side, though. Let's move over a little. I find this very difficult to see on the screen.
I think you can get rid of that sidebar.
Oh, yeah, you're right, that should go, that helps. Okay, that gives you at least the names of the categories and some idea of the percentages. Well, I'll move over as I have to, but essentially, this is a summary of the general fund's revenues in summary format, so by categories. And then what I usually do when I'm looking at this is just look at where we are currently for our collections and where we were at the same time last year. So, this report gives you last year's revised budget and this year's current budget, and then it also gives you what your collections are, and it can help point out to you an area where things look a little strange. You can see our revenues are about 24%, 24.44%, and last year, they were 24.89%, pretty much in line. I'd expect them to be somewhere in that area, you know, one quarter ended around 25%, so it's pretty much in line with my expectations. So, it didn't draw any immediate attention for me in terms of appropriateness, but I always tend to start here, looking at revenues, making sure that they're not lagging too far behind. We never want to have a revenue deficit because we have a balanced budget. We don't want to not get the budget of the revenue that we, we don't want to not get the revenue that we budgeted because we are balanced.
Sharon?
Yep.
If I may. The fee line here under, it goes payment lieu of tax and then fees. Are those the, this goes back to a discussion the board was having earlier. Are those fees, are those fees, are they, do they include the parking permit down by the depot? Payment of those? And we were, I think we asked for the last year's data.
That'll be included when we have the depot discussion.
I think I brought it to you.
Yeah.
I didn't realize you wanted it tonight. I would have brought it, but.
No, that's, we're going to. Separate question, on the interest earnings on investments, do you think we're going to be able to hit the 450?
Oh, yeah. I feel like it's, I feel like we've been seeing that we're getting higher returns on our money for the last couple of years, and DOR won't just let you bump up to what actual was from the prior year. You can only go up up to maybe 8% before they start asking questions and make you prove a trend before they'll allow you to. So, you have to be careful about what you budget, especially in that area because interest rates can go up and down. They don't want you to be overly optimistic about what that number is, but, you know, it is a number that the last couple of years has been producing a lot of regeneration for us, which is helpful, but at the same time, DOR does put a cap on how high you can make that projection be from year to year. They don't want to see you increasing things 10, 20%. That's not going to go over with them. They won't approve it.
Would you feel good we're going to hit or exceed that budget number?
Yes.
Great.
Definitely.
Under other financing sources, the third item down, other funding sources.
Yes.
Why the significant difference between what was collected to date versus last year versus this year?
So, that number there is the actual earnings distribution for our MLD, and so it's probably just an issue of timing of when we collect their first payment. So, that's essentially, there's something else there, an error that I found in terms of money being, you know, coming back in from the library, so I think I had moved money into the library twice, that library project. I recorded something twice and I had to reverse it. And so, that 230 that you see actually has to do with that mistake that I made, and it looks to me that that first payment was not made on time last year, and so that would be the reason that that looks. So, the next, and this is probably not as helpful to look at it this way, but the next is your water. This is more detailed than the general fund, and this is essentially your revenues. And we're looking at same sort of thing. You've got your last year revised budget and your current year budget, and then what are we, where are we at as of September 30th. So, last year, we're at 25.91%, and now this year, we're only at 23.9. The reason I'm not overly concerned with that is the collections that they make from July, August, and September are at the old water and sewer rates. And so, those water and sewer rates will be built up at the higher number for the next billing cycle, and so I expect that to catch us up. So, I'm not overly concerned, and that would be the reason why. That's water. The next one is sewers, same report, same thought processes, looking at where are we at. And for sewer, we essentially were at 26.54% of budget and this year, 23.3, same philosophy. We actually do have an increase in our sewer rates, and those have not started to be built out yet or collected at that rate yet, so that's going to cause a little bit of a lag in that first quarter when you're looking at it. Stormwater is the opposite. In stormwater, we had 20.45% last year and 29.99%. If you recall, last year, we increased the sewer, the stormwater rate, it was like from $40 to $60. And so, last year, you had the opposite issue where, or the same issue was going on last year, that new rate hadn't been shown on that first quarter, and then the remainder there, like the extra, now you're seeing that at the higher rate. So, that looks fine to me. Then when we move to the year-to-date budget reports, these are actually salary, sorry, expense reports. See if I can see them here. So hard to see on here. Sorry about this. So, the way I ran this report for your packet is in summary format, just so I could show you all the departments and show you the different categories to resemble most the way the budget is actually approved. So, we do salary and expense for each department, and then capital's done separately, so this is the best way to show it to you without showing you hundreds of pages. I would look at it at a more detailed view, but this is the best way I could show it to you. So, on this report, when you're looking at it, it shows your original appropriated budget, that is the budget that we approve at April Town Meeting. When you see transfers and adjustments in that column, at this point, all that's there is encumbrances being brought forward from the prior year, so that's money that was encumbered at the end of the year and brought forward as prior year funds. So, that goes into your transfer income, and then the two added together is your revised budget. That transfer income would also be used for any changes that we make at November Town Meeting, so if we adjust the budget, you'd see those changes happening in that transfer income. And then the year-to-date expended are actual invoices that have come in or actual expenses that we've incurred. Encumbrances are being held until the actual invoice comes in. It's a PO, so to speak. So, looking at this, the first thing I tend to do is look at the salaries because they tend to be uniformly spent, kind of equalities throughout the year, and so I usually will fan through and make sure that they're at 25% or less. In doing that, I did not find any of the departments to be close to that 25%, so I wasn't overly concerned. With expenses, however, they're not typically uniformly spent, and so that's a harder, but I do tend to look closer at the higher percentages. So, in the administrative services area, you see 52.7% for expenses. When I investigate that further, I look and see that in that category is property insurance, property and casualty insurance, which is a large expense item in administrative services, and we pay it in the beginning of the year for a 3% discount. We pay the whole thing, and so that's why that percentage looks so high. It's one of our larger items. And most other items seem to be kind of where I would expect. When I drilled in, I did not find anything that kind of drew my attention negatively. Capital tends to be an area where you should see probably high percentages because those are your larger purchases or projects, and so we tend to do a PO and hold that money as soon as we assign it. So, if we pick a vendor to buy a car, we encumber it. If we are starting a project and we do an RFP and we've picked a contractor, as soon as we sign that contract, we encumber it. So, to see a high percentage for capital, not usually a problem. In fact, I prefer to see that. It means that they've addressed the money.
Sharon, for public safety, I know overtime has always been a question. How is that looking so far?
It's hard to say. I mean, I think it's going, I think overtime is one of those things where just in the beginning of the year, it's hard to say because we actually have a lot of things going on, and then as positions get filled, the overtime could trickle down, but it is an area always of concern. But because their overall salaries is not going towards that 25%, I wasn't overly concerned with it because open positions sometimes do create extra overtime, but you've got savings on other salary lines to cover.
Question on the school side?
Yep.
Salaries there are not toward your 25% at all yet.
That would require me to dig deeper with.
Are they less?
They're at 9.7% for professional.
Yeah, their fiscal year sort of starts with the school year.
Oh, you're right, yeah.
They haven't spent a lot of money as we have since July 1st. Got it.
Their biggest expenses, their teachers who start in September, so I guess, yeah, that would make perfect sense.
Cool.
Sharon, so I just noticed the expenses for public safety and, for public safety is pretty high. Is that for the same reason that what you exchanged, what you explained about the encumbrances, that they're, these are expenses that are contracted out or something in that you take on?
So, their overall, yeah, there could be some of that, but their overall budget for, I'm looking here, 132, they've encumbered.
The encumbrance is probably cars, police cars.
Yes, their cars are part, aren't part of their capital, but part of their expenses. They actually have purchasing cars, yeah.
So, it's the same.
And you notice they're in the encumbrance, so usually what happens is, once they order the car, they encumber it, and then we're waiting on an invoice. So, it either will be in the expense column or the encumbrance, depending on where we are in that purchase. And that is kind of an odd thing. You think a car is kind of a capital item, but it is in their expenses, so that makes sense.
Thanks.
I did actually speak to their admins because they were a little confused about some POs that were still open, so we did look at. So we did look at their expenses pretty extensively and noticed that they were putting a couple of things in the wrong spaces. And so it looked like their percentages in certain categories looked a little off, and it was that they used the wrong account number.
Uh huh.
Just kind of errors made just because we have some new administrative staff that are not as familiar with, where am I supposed to charge this? And then it makes the budget look a little funny, so.
Okay.
That being said, not a lot of things drew my attention in this area, but I figured I would provide it in your packet so you could review it. And obviously you can ask questions as you see. In the water and sewer, I did the same exercise. I look at their salary and wages, and all of them are with, seem to be in line. Stormwater seems like it's low, but I think we have an open position there, so that explains that. And then again, capital should be kind of high. They tend to act on those things pretty quickly, especially if they have something to purchase. Like I know that the sewer, water and sewer, like they had a backhoe. I kind of can track. Water has a dump truck fully encumbered. They have some water booster station technology expensed, and then the rest of it encumbered. So they really try and get working on the capital piece very quickly. And I appreciate that because we don't want to be chasing our tails at the end. So essentially, the biggest things I looked at when I was looking at water, sewer, and stormwater was their capital, their percentages, making sure everything looked to be encumbered and in the right spot. None of the expenses rose to any level where I considered to be excessive at this point. And so I figured I would provide the report, but it's kind of still early in the year. It's not at a point where you'd ever kind of say, well, we're definitely trending too high and we're gonna need money. The first quarter tends not to be that quarter where I'm looking at it and seeing a lot of that. Maybe if I saw salaries trending above the 25%, I'd be concerned. But salaries, I mean, expenses tend to be spread kind of up and down, not as uniformly. And so people are watching them. We all are watching them. And also in munis, when they go to encumber, if there's not enough money, it's gonna stop them. They're not gonna allow it. So it kind of protects them from overspending.
So that information is not presented in here? The water, sewer?
It is in the packet. So I just didn't scroll far enough down on this because this is kind of hard to read.
Is it below?
So right after the general fund. So this is all the general fund, which is several pages. And then when you get to water and sewer, they're all on like one page. So salaries for water, 21.7%.
Oh, I got it. Yep, yep, yep.
And so the higher percentage that draw your attention is all capital, which is what I would expect.
Right.
And then when I looked into them, I could see that there were all things I expected to already have started, so.
Thank you.
So that's the extent of the fiscal 20 review. There isn't a lot going on. That first quarter doesn't tend to have a lot that draws my interest, but we do look at it.
Yep.
The last item I wanted to discuss with you is the declaration of trust document that is in your packet. Let me get to my page of my notes before we talk about that. So in this trust document, well, essentially, first off, let me just say that we, we have intent on, we actually have an OPEB trust that we created at town meeting based on accepting Chapter 32b, Section 20. And we needed the trust document to be able to even entertain the idea of investing with the state, it's the state.
Prit.
Yeah, well, it's Prit, but it's basically through the state. So it's the State Retirees Benefits Trust Fund. And in order to actually be able to apply to invest your money there, they needed a physical trust document. And there was a lot of unclear portions of the legislation prior, and they didn't seem to be requiring in the other legislation that we had accepted prior, a physical trust document, but Prit absolutely wanted, or the State Retirement Board absolutely wanted this trust document. So Ray Mieres has drawn this up for us, and it basically outlines who the trustee would be, and that would be our treasurer, Andrew. He's also the custodian. It actually states in the document that we are allowed to invest this money with the State Retirement Board. So it gives us that investment, right? It also states within the document, yep?
I'm sorry, we can or we have to?
We can. We can. We don't have to, but it gives you that permission to do so. And when I get into it at the end, I will tell you the steps to doing the investment and where we are in that process. It also does not require us to make any specific payments towards the OPEB trust. We do, as part of our budget, budget money in there, but it doesn't require us in this document, any specific amount to go in. It is irrevocable in that the money will not revert back to the town unless that liability is fully defeasted, which I don't see that happening anytime soon. So it's just important to understand that this is an irrevocable. But we did create this trust years ago. It just, legislation was updated and made more clear. And now we finally know what the trust document is supposed to look like. We have a trust document, and now we can proceed to get this money invested at a better interest rate. Because right now, we're limited in what Andrew can invest it in. He's got it at MMDT or CDARs, and we're only getting small percentage rates. In Prit, we would actually be able to invest this money with the pension funds and get better returns. So.
Sharon, before you go further into this document, can you provide a little bit of background as far as the creation of the trust, the purpose it serves, et cetera? Sort of a trust fund 101, if you would.
Purpose of the trust and why we need the document?
Not why we need the document.
No, that is.
Just the trust itself.
The trust itself.
What we've done with it to date.
So the purpose of the trust is to create a vehicle to invest in the OPEB or designated for OPEB liability. And that is a growing liability that we've had. And so we created that to have a trust fund that we could put the money in and start investing towards that liability. And that was done back in, I want to say originally in 2013, we accepted that section of the law, and it created a trust. But we didn't have a trust document, nor did we even have guidance on who are the board of trustees for this? How does this even get created? We had a lot of unanswered questions, and we just struggled. How are we supposed to do this? We actually met with Paul Tedesca over at Prit, who gave us a lot of guidance about how this is done. And he highlighted to us that there were a lot of concerns because it didn't require a written trust document, and they really wanted one. They really wanted people to hold off until they could get a trust document. And there was very little guidance on who are the trustees supposed to be? What's the formulation of this? And so that kind of put a monkey wrench in it for quite a while. And so we've been investing those funds in, you know, very low-risk MMDTs, you know, money market, CDs, and getting very little return when we can invest now if we do this with Prit and get, you know, 7.5% to 9%, you know, is what they like average. But there are definitely years that's down and up, but certainly more than what we're getting at a money market. And so April of 2017, we re-accepted the section of the law, which the legislation had updated it and made it more clear. A lot of the gray areas, particularly the trust and how that's supposed to be laid out. And then Ray Mieres's office actually drew up this document, and the easiest form, I would imagine, is to make the treasurer the trustee. I don't know if there were other options, but that's what they elected. And it seems like that would be the best path forward, the fastest way to put this together so that we can begin investing with the state. The state meets like four or five times a year, and they're meeting again in December. The only thing I'm not sure of, if you execute this trust document, it takes 90 days for it to become an effect from the date that you execute it. So I don't know if we have to wait that 90 days before we can apply to invest with them or if we can start the process. And then they'll let us invest after 90 days is up, if this is fully executed, as they say.
Is investing with them, so first, is there currently funding in this trust?
Yes. So as part of our annual budget, we put in about, on the general fund, about $500,000 is what we started with. I think we're up to like $600,000 for the general fund. The enterprise funds are fully funding their annual required. So just like the pension trust fund, we have an actuarial evaluation that tells us how big is this liability? And then they give you a funding schedule. We have not been able to fully fund our annual required contribution to fund it in a 30-year period. So every time, every two years, they come out and they do it, and they give us a new 30-year schedule, at least for the general fund. But the enterprise funds, the numbers are more reasonable and we're able to do it. And that one's gonna be fully funded around the time our pension is for the enterprise fund. So that would be water, sewer, and stormwater. The general fund is just too large. And with the pension liability being, you know, still out there, there's nowhere to get the kind of money we'd need to do the OPEB. So the hope is that once that's fully funded in 2029, we will redirect funding to try and really, you know, chip away at what we really are supposed to be putting in towards OPEB, which is like a $67 million liability. So it's a big one. So we wanted, we've been putting money aside when others have not, so it's been viewed very positively by, you know, bond rating agencies, by our auditors, but still very small amounts compared to what the liability is.
So is, just before we go down the rabbit hole of looking at this, like the legal document, is the ask here that we approve this tonight?
It would be nice if you could, but if you wanted to think about it, we could obviously come back and execute it at a later date. But it would also delay us in our process of applying to invest with the state.
Can I just go to the board of, are we comfortable with this? Do we have a lot of questions?
I have two questions. So Article 12, 12.1, actually says we shall invest in SR BTF. It doesn't say we may. So I don't know if that's an oversight or if that's what it's supposed to be, 12.1. Shall invest and reinvest in the SR BTF?
I don't know if it's an oversight or if that's, they do know that that is our intent.
Yeah.
Shall invest.
I'm just concerned because this document is irrevocable, and it also says things that aren't in here aren't to be considered, so.
And we already learned that shall has 31 meetings.
Yeah.
So let's avoid that again.
Can I say something? So the other option, the reason that they do that is right now you have all the money invested through the legal list. And the legal list is bank, a town, CDs, the money market. Outside of that legal list, you can't invest. So the treasurer can invest only inside of that legal list.
Right.
The highest detail on that legal list is 2%. So that's why they say shall invest. If you invest it in there, it opens up the door to earn an average of 7.5%. That investment test that they have, it's invested in the open market as they, by their allocations, and it earns an average of 7.5%. It does have years where it had 11% return, years that was lower than that, but it's way definitely gonna make more than investing with the CDs and money market. Keep in mind, if the economy goes down, the money market will work 0.05% basically now, doing any money at all. The other, that's why I think they put that in there because there is no other option either investing in the legal list or with them. With them, definitely, you'll earn more money.
So there are only those two options?
Right.
And this is the better.
The other thing I want to say is that I want to mention with the OPEB, it's not mandated. But if something changed in the future and they mandated, that liability is so huge that you wanna do the most that you can. We're lucky enough because we're planning on it. But if the law changes and they start saying, okay, from now on, you're gonna have to plan for it, you're kind of ahead of the trouble and ahead of everybody else because we already have lowered the liability by investing in a trust that earns money for you.
Now, as the money earns money, that kind of, you know, that helps to face the liability as well. So you really want to get the most.
No, Andre, interesting. One other question. Article 11, annual reports. So would the trust be reviewed by the auditor?
Oh, you mean in terms of the audit? They already do look at it. It's part of our, it's part of our audit. They look at it as our fiduciary trusts.
So I guess this is a question for Ray. Does the writing of 11.1 account for that?
The trustees shall furnish to the town annually or more frequently to the towns.
And then it's got this MGL 32b, Section 20, which I have no idea what that is. Is that what town meeting accepted? Sounds familiar.
Uh huh. Yeah, that's Mass General, Chapter 32b, Section 20. That is the section of the law we accepted to create the trust.
Does that allow for, require that it's part of the audit?
Well, because it's on our books, it's a trust fund that sits on our books, all of it gets audited.
Okay. And do we need to change anything in 11 or is 11 as written? Okay, because 11 says that there's gonna be an annual report. And I just want to know that.
Well, currently, we haven't had any requirements to provide anything because we didn't have a trust document. But this would actually be coming from the trustee, so this would be your treasurer providing an annual report on the status of the fund.
I think the question is, do we want to make, do we want to make the audit part of this document such as a required action?
Oh.
As opposed to optional? Because if it's not in this, then.
It's certainly not optional because it's part of our general ledger. I mean, it gets included regardless.
Okay.
It's funds that we're holding, and so all of it gets included in the audit. I don't know if it needs to say it, but that's.
But could it be omitted? I think is what I would know.
I can't see why.
Only by error, the auditing.
On the, yeah, on the auditor's part, but it's always looked at every year.
I believe what they're referring to is the, so the trust is invested, it's kind of allocation, and if there is sales, so if there is buys and sells that happen within the trust, they will actually, it's like a state, a bank state. I think that's what they're referring to, that the trustee has to at least provide to the select board an annual report that shows all of the money mover of the fund, where they get invested. There is money that gets invested with Prit quarterly. For example, you're gonna see in that report. It's just like an annual statement that would show all the buys and the sells that happen within. And that's actually done by Prit. Those are the statements.
But, yeah, I know Prit comes out for the pension trust fund. I would imagine if we were doing it through OPEB, they come out and make a presentation every year. Right now, it's to the retirement board. For OPEB, it would be the select board. And they would go over their performance and, you know, their asset allocation, how it's selected. They give you a little understanding about how they devise their asset allocation, what the performance is and the individual types of investments that they have, what the percentages are, where the money lies, and all of that. They do that every year, a couple of times a year actually at the retirement board. So I would, I would guess that they would come out and do that here or. Andrew, as the trustee, would be required to do it, yeah.
So it sounds to me like we've got a few questions that we may need Ray to clarify. Is that accurate?
The only one that I've heard that I feel like we need Ray to clarify is the, did we mean shall?
The shall, yeah.
One question that I do have that I think Sharon would be able to answer most likely is, so there's our trust fund, and then we'd be in, would the goal be, I'm just, the interaction between our trust fund, the state retirement, excuse me, this.
Are you looking to find out if the.
SR BTF.
Yeah. Is the money kept separate?
And then the Prit fund. So like, is it our trust fund then goes into the SR BTF, which goes in, which is then managed by Prit? How is that, how do those?
It's, from what I understand, it goes in and is retired under the state, but we're kept separate. Our funds are kept separate. So we receive a statement that's separate, much like what we receive now from Prit for our pension. It's just a vehicle for us to allow us to actually invest in Prit, which.
The state retiree benefits trust fund is the vehicle that allows us.
Uh huh. Okay. That's, that's how I understand it. Maybe Ray would have a different take, but I absolutely think that that's the only improvement they have because they don't commingle our funds. They keep everything separate. And that's the way the pension one works as well.
Question?
I think if you're concerned about shall, there's no rush here, but I think that one distinction is the shall means you have to go into this entity of the state, but it doesn't give the state the right to invest the funds. Andre has that right. It gives him then the opportunity to choose how to invest within that framework. So it's not just your ceding control in any sense away from the treasurer, but it's allowing the treasurer.
12.1.
So for instance, I assume, Andre, that, you know, if they give you permission in January, you can decide how to enter the markets. You wouldn't, well, you can decide, I won't even tell you.
Yeah, it says the trustee shall, so.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, I don't see an issue.
Pursuant to the vote taken.
I have one other question. Section 3.5, the trustee shuffles legal title to all property of the trust, neither the town nor any employee, official, or agent of the town nor any individual have any right, title, or interest in the trust. But as employees, as an employee of the town, does the treasurer not have an interest in the trust?
I believe that would be like a massive trust, plus the, whatever you target, the interest that I have is for the trust to make money, obviously. So do I have a personal interest? If I'm not, I don't own any share in PRIX, that's the other thing. The only conflict of interest that I would have is if this money is invested in a firm that I own shares.
Do we have any kind of disclosure or legal language to prevent this or any future treasurer from having that conflict of interest?
Well, once money is in PRIX, it's actually managed by, well, it also is, they're money managers within PRIX that are actually managing this fund. So he doesn't make a lot of investment choices about what particular, hey, when you're in PRIX, yeah, once it's in there, they're making the choices about asset allocation and what, where the money is being invested to get us to where we're going. So he's not actually making the decision saying, I'm going to invest in.
But can a treasurer hypothetically have a separate involvement with PRIX?
I don't know.
Like personally in some way?
Well, if he had like a.
If he's a person, he wouldn't qualify.
No. It is really set up for state and local municipalities to fund their pensions. That's what PRIX does, that's all they do. And so I think it would be hard for him to have a conflict.
It couldn't unless he started a town.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
It's secret, I was trying to make the connection. You can't. And I think that's why they do this, it's another vehicle to prevent people having interest in the town, because you can't, PRIX is completely separate, it's owned by the state, they get their own government authorities, so there's no way that you can benefit from it.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
What do you, are you satisfied with the shall explanation?
Yes, I am satisfied with the shall explanation.
I'm sufficiently satisfied to vote to, or to be willing to execute today. I don't know if others are.
I feel that way, yes.
Anyone who's sensitive to the fact that John is not here, Bob, did he make any mention of?
I haven't talked to him about this topic at all, so.
No, I haven't yet, but no.
I didn't, you did mention that he wasn't going to be here, and I didn't think to email him about it.
Can we not execute it with there being only four of us?
I think we can.
You can, just a question whether you want to.
More just a courtesy, if this was a topic of interest for him, I would want to hold off, but if he hasn't mentioned it, then.
Right.
All right.
So there is an emotion, but Sharon has to invent one for you.
So what I came up with is motion to accept and execute the trust document as written.
So how about move to, sorry, accept and?
Move to accept and execute the trust doc, the OPEB trust document as written, yeah.
As written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? It's all over the favor.
So the last piece is that you have to sign it.
Do you have a hard copy?
I have a hard copy.
Just go. All right. All right, so how do we?
That was your question.
Oh, no?
Are you, I'm hoping they're probably carrying on the bigger changes.
So we've.
There's a gentleman up, sitting up there.
Oh, I'll go talk to him.
Oh, do you want to check the things, Bill? But to answer your question, Bill, to answer your question, Bill, we'll be opening the hearing because it's scheduled for tonight, we have to. We will take any public comment if there is any, otherwise, we'll postpone it. Yeah. Okay. So while we get settled, why don't we just take a two-minute break? Because Bob's leading the next one.
Before you do that, there's one more thing looks like related to Andrew, right, to request?
Andrew's doing the tax title thing, do you want him to do that or?
Oh, is he doing tax title or Bob?
Yeah, he's doing the tax title.
Okay. What's the verdict, Bob?
I couldn't find it.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to mention before we go to him, it's just that there is seven steps to invest with PRIX, and we're about three, after we execute this trust document, we're on step four. So the first is to accept Chapter 32B, Section 20, we've done that twice, so we accepted it, and then we re-accepted it once the legislation was updated, adopted OPEB funding policy. We did that with FinCom back in August of 2018. Tonight, hopefully, we'll, we've, did we vote that?
Yeah.
Voted to declare the trust. Step four is for Andrew to sign an investment agreement with the state retirees benefit trust fund, and then town council will need to write a letter representing the all legal steps that have been properly taken. So anything that the legislation outlines or that PRIX has asked for, that we've done everything legally and is in order, and that we have the right to invest in the state retirement trust, which I think is why he put that specifically in there, so that it wasn't vague at all. And then we would submit all those documents to the state, the state retirement benefits trust fund board for their next meeting. If they approve it, they would sign off, and then we would invest our money, we could start putting money in. So we're almost there, halfway there, just so you're aware.
Just, if I could to understand, is it, is one pool, or do you actually get to allocate inside of their options?
They allocate.
They allocate. So you say, here's the money, and then they decide.
The only decision that the trustee is going to make is, do I want to put this money in the PRIX fund, and once he does that, they manage the money.
Got it, got it. So they've become, do we currently have a money manager that's involved with OPEB monies right now?
No, just the treasurer.
Okay.
No. The pension is in PRIX.
He's cheap.
And the retirement board has hired an investment advisor to help us bring, you know, we're getting closer to being fully funded, to take some of the money out of the PRIX fund and put it into PRIX sleeves, where we actually can control our allocation a little bit better, but that's a long way off for the OPEB. That's when you're trying to reduce your risk or control your asset allocation yourself. We're nowhere near that, we're just starting with the OPEB.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thank you. You're it.
So Bob, will you reach out to John to have him sign? All right, so next up, we'll be having a discussion on tax title properties. And I believe first.
I can wait.
Do you think we can't sit here? It's a good thing I have here. It's going to be a lot of them.
Yeah.
You're not having to extend it. It's not worth it, so it doesn't matter. Okay.
So first of all, the memo, I apologize for the memo, it was on the fly. I was flying to LA, and I did it on my computer, and I didn't have a full memo, so I sent it over, and they just got me a piece of, it's going to be more formal and exact. Just a little background, when I started working for the town, I took over some of the work from the previous treasurer, and one of them, one of their responsibilities for the treasurer is to deal with the tax titles and for those properties. The previous treasurer, she was very, very strict when it came to legal matters, and she would not do anything that was against the law, or it was, it didn't follow the proper legal procedure. As I started working for the, with the, I was just looking at the foreclosed properties and just the process, in the process of working with them, seeing how many we have and all that stuff, I emailed the tax title attorney, and the first thing that he said, he mentioned the, this section of law, Chapter 60, Section 77B, and asked me if the previous treasurer had done anything with approving this section of the law, because it's required by law in order for a person to work on this, on the foreclosed properties. And I did not have any records of it. I reached out to Laura, the town clerk, she didn't have any records. Unfortunately, the previous treasurer is no longer with us, so that was, we lost a huge resource, because she was guiding me in a lot of things, and I just couldn't find anything at all. So the tax title attorney suggested that instead of spending all of this time looking, why don't you talk to the select board and see if they're willing to do a roll call vote? That's all it takes, to assign a custodian that will take care of the administrative side. And I said, well, I would like to do some work before I go to them, and he basically said, if you want to do any work that has an action associated with it, you can, because you're not appointed, you're not legally appointed for it. So the reason that I'm in front of you is, this chapter, this section will at least allow me to start working with this foreclosed property and come back and report to you what I find and what the next step. So you would still be in charge of making most of the decision, however, the administrative part, it's going to be done by me. It can get pretty intense with the paperwork, but we have a good attorney that at least helps me with it, because I can, you can't, you can't do this by yourself, you know, so. But that's the main reason. I'm going to still come back to you and report on what I find, and we can have a longer conversation. However, the first step will be that you need a custodian in order to do this. And a lot of towns, this is the easy way of doing it, they just appoint the treasurer. The treasurer follows the tax title process very closely, and foreclosed properties nowadays are very, very rare. They don't happen, people just pay their tax title, it just doesn't make any sense, you know? So these are very rare. I know other towns, when it comes to foreclosed properties, they do appoint a treasurer, but it's done back in the days. Most likely, it was done for us too, I just can't find anything at all, because I can't imagine a previous treasurer doing any work without having this section of the law. So I'm, I think it was done at some point in time, but we just don't have a record of it. So better be in safe, I'm sorry, that's why it's just an administrative matter. And then I can come back to you and report on what I find, and we can have a longer conversation of what we can do and what other options are there and all that stuff, so. Let me know if you guys have any questions.
So you get involved once the foreclosure is complete, is that correct? The property's been foreclosed on, it's finished, the court has said, it reverts to the town, and then the issue is, it reverts to the town, but there's no one that can deal with it. Is that where we are right now?
Right, exactly. So once it happens, once it hits that foreclosed, there's back and forth that still has to go on, but because it's a full board, that back and forth needs to go with the board, not with the custodian. So that administrative piece is just a nightmare. So they assign, instead of dealing with a full board, they assign, they like to deal with one person, and that one person gets in touch with the attorney, and the attorney will do most of the work, but the administrative side. It's just more, it's easier having one person that deals with it on a daily basis than a group that needs, wants it two weeks or every other week, so.
I think I need to back up a little bit to understand your role. My understanding of foreclosures is that when a home is foreclosed upon, it is, it's the lender, the bank, who has, who takes ownership of it and has title of the property. But in your memo and in what, and what Mark said, the town is taking ownership or is taking title, so is this in the context of where someone had already paid for their, paid off their mortgage but still had property taxes to pay and then failed to pay the property taxes?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Which is very rare.
Sure.
But it happens.
It does happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's why it's, and the other thing is, I can't dig through this information, because I don't have the legal authority yet to find out what happened, so we're just guessing at this point.
And I know in the kind of, the mortgagie mortgageor situation, there's all of this process and notification, and what happens, what happens in Redding or what happens in any community when someone isn't paying their taxes? What is that process? Is there, is there a conversation? Is there notice? Is there a attempt to negotiate or come up with a payment plan? How does that work?
Right, so everything is outlined in the law, the tax title attorney, the law is very specific when it comes to notifications of the people that live there. It's so specific that if you don't abide by it, if the law says you need to give notice by 15 days, and then you get it on a 16 day, it just nulls it out. So our tax title attorney makes sure that that notice section is fully compliant and fully done. So I am guessing that that's already been done, but I don't know yet. So when I, when I look into it, I'll be able to be a little more specific. It was just, I was advised from a tax title attorney, don't do anything yet unless you go in front of the board and ask for them to appoint you as the administrator or the custodian of this, so.
And since I'm not under his rules, I can say that for many years, the town has worked out things with the owners. Sorry, Bill. The town has no interest in owning property.
Sure.
So we've always worked with the owner, sometimes their family, in a payment plan. You know, if you can't afford this, how about this? And generally, the treasurer has written up a payment plan, and then sometimes it's adhered to, sometimes it isn't. It's usually in Redding, pretty far down the road where we finally say, we just can't push this off forever, it's not fair to the other taxpayers, but it's a long process. And then the treasurer has come to this board to execute tax title and do a taking, but again, that's only a couple of times in my memory.
Yes, and in those situations, does then the town effectively evict the, or does it get to the point where you have to then?
It could.
It could potentially get to the point where you evict the resident.
If the board remembers that the property we owned jointly, if you will, with Wakefield, that was in tax title. The folks walked away from that property and with a property tax bill, and so no one was living there, and it sat there for many years until we got together and figured out, maybe we should do something about this. So every town's appetite is a little different for how long to take and how to treat the individuals, but I think most communities are pretty comfortable saying they just don't want to own it. They just want their payment back.
Sure.
So ultimately, you know, on a property where no one's living, it's a little easier, the town will sell it and then take back the property tax, and then depending on if there are other liens, which there could be on the property, the other folks get paid also. But I think Andre's being careful, he hasn't really investigated yet, because he was told not to, but I'm speaking sort of more historically.
I guess then historically, I know in some communities, tenant groups kind of get together and try to, after their homes have been closed upon, residents try to see if they can work out with the bank the ability to stay and pay rent to the bank in the home that they used to own. Is that something that's happened? I mean, I know this is probably extremely rare, but has that happened something?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, I assume that the town probably doesn't have a strong interest in being a landlord either.
Right, right.
It's difficult to say. The one thing that I'll tell you right now is, if you go, I just want to process of getting a mortgage, they don't let you pay your taxes anymore. The reason that they don't do that is, you have to, they pay, because if you don't pay, they take over the property.
Rather than the town.
The town cannot foreclose them anymore, so they will take over the property. So that's why this instance has been so rare, but.
But you're aware that there are a couple of situations right now.
I'm aware, I don't know if it's legal for him to be aware.
So again, as I said, from the paperwork that I have from the previous treasurer, there are, I would say there are a couple of properties that I need to look into it and see if they've gone through the process or not.
And you're saying that if you would bring this back, anytime there was such a situation, you would bring it back to the board as to how to proceed?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right.
I'll investigate it and see, find out what happened, and then at the end, you will still come back to the board, and I'll ask them, what do you, would you like to do with it? Again, we still need to consider the legalities of it. Basically, if the previous owners are still alive, for example, or if there is a heir for you. So there is multiple options that you can do, so.
Sure, every situation I'm sure is different.
The one thing that I'll tell you is, in the recent Massachusetts Treasure Collector School that I that I went, it's become, as Bob said, it's become a practice that the towns are, they're not in the business of owning houses. They don't have anything to do with it. But again, if it affects the numbers or if it affects their budget, there are other things that you can do with these proceeds. I've seen it done, like affordable housing transfers, you can do all of these things with the proceeds, so.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Down the road, you will make that decision, what you want to do if you decide you want anything with it, but this will be the first step.
Okay. So I don't have a question about the actual appointing as a custodian. I do have a question as far as if there are any occupants in any of these properties, is it, would it become the authority of the custodian or would the board still maintain authority to evict or how to handle those occupants?
So, the one thing that I'll tell you is, the town is protected no matter what. We have insurances on this property, so we are completely protected when it comes to these things. So, because that's the other thing you need to worry about. If there is people that live there, if there is, again, I need to investigate if there is, there are still people that live there. You need to be protected, because I've heard a few other stories in the, at the school. One of them was a homicide. So, and that was the urgency that I brought to Bob, and I said, "Bob, we need to take care of these properties to protect the town from some, if something happens in these properties, we're going to be liable." It's the same thing that's happening in the town.
Can you speak up a little, Andre?
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
So, but again, as far as if there are occupants in these properties, does this motion to appoint you as custodian grant you the authority to evict them? Or does that responsibility and authorities lie with the board?
I will still come back for your permission for it. I can't just go in and start evicting people, you know what I mean? I'll come back and I'll report. That reporting section of it is, I'll come back to you and I'll say, "This is what I found, these are our options." Again, it will still, the tax title attorney is going to be involved with it and he's going to give us a few options. But I would not go and act on my behalf, because it's just not so, that's why you have a custodian. I'm still, so if you appoint me, you're not going to lose anything, you just have somebody that will do the legwork. I'll still come back to you. At the end of the day, you still make the decisions. It's just someone that will do the administrative side for you.
Which sounds lovely to me, so thank you. I can take your package. All right, but the one I need in the future, it's at the bottom, copy of that bottom.
Move to appoint the treasurer as a custodian under Chapter 60, Section 77B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I just make it just a little bit more specific?
Sure.
Point the treasurer as a custodian under Chapter 60, Section 77B.
And appoint the treasurer as a custodian that would have the care, custody, management, and control for land acquired through foreclosure under Section 80 of MGL.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. So I'll read it back. So it's his first paragraph.
Is this a friendly amendment? Just a process issue here, Mark. We had a, a motion was made, we had a second, and then.
Okay, I'll make it friendly.
So, good.
All right, so we have a friendly amendment.
Does it accept as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So now I will read, move to appoint the treasurer as the custodian under Chapter 60, Section 77B. So that the custodian would have the care, custody, management, and control for land acquired through foreclosure under Section 80 of MGL.
Okay. It's a friendly amendment, the second approves. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so next up on the agenda, we have a hearing to review the Select Board liquor policy changes, however.
I'll just walk in the hallway quickly.
Okay, thank you. However, our attorney isn't able to be here this evening, and John, who has led this process to review the policies, is also unable to be here. So we will be opening the hearing, if anyone is interested, no, if anyone is interested in providing public comment on the subject, we will take it now, otherwise we will continue it to a future date. So if you can open the hearing, Mark.
So I need to read the.
You just need to read that.
Yeah. "To the inhabitants of the town of Redding, please take notice that the Select Board of the town of Redding will hold a public hearing on October 15th, 2019, at 8:00 p.m. in the Select Board's meeting room, 16 Lowell Street, Redding, Massachusetts, on amending Article III licenses of the Select Board's policies, including but not limited to Section 3.2 liquor license policies. A copy of the proposed amendments to this article will be available in the Select Board packet made public on Wednesday, October 9th, 2019, on the website at www.reddingma.gov. The current article is available on the town website at HTTPS://www.reddingma.gov/SelectBoard/pages/SelectBoardPolicies. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 4:00 p.m. on October 15th, 2019 to townmanager@ci.reddingma.us by order of Robert W. Lashir, Town Manager."
So, I'll open it up to public comment, seeing none. We will continue the hearing to November 19th at 8:00 p.m.
Do we need to, a motion to?
Yes, do we have a motion to that?
Move to continue the hearing on the Select Board Policies Article III to November 19th, 2019, at 8:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
No, a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. Next up, we need to sign a lien purchase document. Mr. Dees, signing property, Lee?
Yeah, this is, if I may, this is the second and less expensive and smaller piece. Previously, the board has dealt with the larger piece and the more expensive piece. This didn't have to technically be on your agenda, because it's already a thing you've discussed and voted on, but it just seemed more transparent to do so. There is no motion required, the board has already taken that action, you just need to sign this document that's being circulated.
Great, thank you.
I have a question very much related, so Bob, in your written update to us, you mentioned that the status of the third property in question, the T-Connect property, is now no longer, well, the plan has changed. Has it been sold? Is that a finished activity or?
I have not seen any sales, the assessor's not seen any sales. The owner of the property just said that he was going to, and I believe his word was sell it to the hunters. You know, I had a discussion with a hunter, and what it could be is, he's just leasing it to the hunters, as opposed to selling it, so it's the same effect. But instead of paying 25,000 or more, it could just be an annual payment, and he still retains the land. So I don't know, is the answer. He just said that he had a better offer from the hunters and he was going to sell it to them, is what he said to me. But we have not seen a transaction.
Is there an opportunity for us to respond?
We've tried.
Okay.
Again, very shortly before that answer, John Halsey and I had met with him, and it seemed like a clear path ahead, so this was kind of a sharp turn, if you will.
What kind of hunting are we talking about?
Bowhunting, which is what has been there historically. The good news is, it's still owned by the same person, and he may change his mind in the future.
Be interested in approaching that if it comes up.
Oh, sorry, I handed it back that way. I'll hand this, if I have time this one, I'll hand it that way.
All right. Do we need to have John sign this?
It's not necessary, no.
Okay. All right. So, all set? All right, next up, we'll be voting to approve Town Manager Goals. So this is something that we had talked about in, looks like, June. And generally speaking, the goals are approved shortly after the start of the new fiscal year, coincide with the Town Manager's contract renewal, which occurs in May or June. So we are a little behind. This is the first step in order to proceed with the Town Manager of the annual evaluation. So with that in mind, on page 79 of the packet, we do have Town Manager Goals, that they should be familiar to everyone. Bob, if you'd like to give a brief update on anything since we last talked about this?
Sure. I specifically did not update any of the texts, just so it could lie the way it were in June. You know, we've charged ahead on most of these topics anyways. Many of you have attended the community conversations held in the Library of Miami. We have not done much with volunteerism, so that would be a change if we were to. Again, the board is pretty familiar with three and four, both parts of economic development, kind of two different prongs, if you will. Building security governments, governance, rather, we have worked on. Town Meeting authorized the building security study, and then authorized the debt authorization for the whole project. Governance is a subset of that. So the schools, and we have had preliminary discussions, but we have not gone far on that. My guess is that governance will be something discussed in public, generally speaking, because it will be policy, not your purview. Employer attraction and retention in December?
Bob.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, the building, I missed your point on building security, governance, so.
Governance is policy, it's rules and regulations. For instance, the school department has oodles of policy.
Right.
This is the way that students will behave in the building from a security standpoint.
Yeah.
We don't have that currently for town buildings, the library does, but the rest of the town buildings do not. That's something we would likely want to develop. And that would come to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Employee retention and retention, you will have an update from the HR Director as, I think it's the December 3rd, it's the first December meeting, which isn't technically a budget meeting. Charter and general bylaw updates have been ongoing. Matt could give you an update if you ever want to hear about his ventures with the Bylaw Committee. In Town Meeting, you have, I think it's three or four zoning articles that will finish off that work for the year. Software review and evaluation, I'll just be quiet about, because I have not asked for an update. We did, as part of the override, get a software coordinator position, and she's been excellent. Emergency management, the chief, by that I mean, the chief burns, continues to be the Emergency Management Director, and every year we work on different tabletop exercises. We are discussing whether the next one should include other multi-towns. That'd be a little more difficult to pull off, it probably wouldn't be possible in a year, but maybe over two years. I don't know, I don't think the board attended the last one, it was at Austin Prep, and it was really good, the headmaster was very helpful. And both our staff and the headmaster's staff, as is always the case, learn a lot from exercises. Practicing is always great. The next two are capital projects or capital aspects, parks and fields and buildings. I would say we have not made much progress in parks and fields. If you look at the capital plan that will go to November Town Meeting, a lot of the proposed funding of parks and fields is in the future. Some of that is because a year or two ago, the state funded 900,000 odd in a bond bill, which we may or may not ever see. So we pushed all the work into the future, and that was non-school parks, if you will. There are some proposed changes to school area, playgrounds and parks and facilities. One of the decision points, though, is the elementary school space study. We don't want to do anything, really virtually in any elementary school until we know what their plan is, because they are looking at all five elementary schools, just to see what their options are.
Do we know when the results of that study will be complete?
We don't, but you'll have an update tomorrow night from the superintendent as part of the financial forum.
Thank you.
Yep. And then lastly, buildings is probably a longer term thing, there's a few aspects to that. The DPW garage, we've had very little discussion about in this room. Elementary school space is certainly ahead of that and more important. We've had a discussion previously about a community center slash maybe a different building, senior center. That is not advanced, I know the board was interested in that. I don't think there's any other buildings offhand, but that's again, a longer term discussion. I was also open to any suggestions the board may have on other goals, I have not heard anything since June.
So, Bob, to be clear, these goals were set by?
These goals are, no, these goals are suggested by myself through town staff for the next year, for the current year, we're in FY '20. So starting July 1st.
Were you reviewing these late spring?
I think it was June, late June.
Yes, right.
So these should be all fairly familiar to everyone, because we did talk about them.
So the question just is, do you agree with these goals, disagree with these goals, have any other suggestions in mind?
If anything, if anyone has new goals, bearing in mind that we are now in the middle of October, sort of several months in, and admittedly, sometimes priorities can change mid-year.
Yeah.
But as we choose to evaluate, we will be evaluating the Town Manager in June of, or the summer of 2020.
2020.
Thank you. So that would be what these goals would be.
Right. I just jumped ahead into the future topic of tonight, which will be the evaluation of his 2019, '20.
Yes, and that's the next step when we review forms, that'll be the next step.
I apologize for jumping ahead.
Yep. So, is the feeling of the board that we are comfortable with these goals for the Town Manager for the remainder of the 1920 timeline?
The only possible addition, and it's one that almost is, I think, inherent and a continuous goal, is the customer service component of Town Hall. And I know it's included in last year's goal, so I don't know if it's, if it's worth kind of carrying that over into this year, or this coming fiscal year, but.
I would agree with that, I think that could fall into community.
Yeah, I think it's simple, you'll get an update in December if you think there's more work to do, and there always is.
There, yes, the one that's there always is.
We'll add it. The board had asked me to remove operational things that happen automatically, so that was one of the reasons.
Under that, I'm very glad you're involved in those community conversations, I think having the Town Manager there is really critical to this. I just wanted to be careful about, the tenor of the national debate leaking into these discussions. That's not necessarily a concern, I think that may be, that's a part of these community discussions, and I think it's good to, that we hear about them, if they're behind some of the challenges that the community conversations are trying to address. And then, so that was just one comment on the first one. The second one, if I may, not the second one, I apologize. The retention, Bob, just to remind you, some meetings ago, I thought it would be a good idea to get the data on the last three years, or something of, people who have come, left, how long they've been here, et cetera. So just a reminder that that would be a good thing to have.
Yes, I expect that's what Judy will present you in the first meeting in December.
Okay.
As well as anecdotes, stories.
Okay.
You know, we lose people all the time.
Right.
You can't not lose them, you just have to be careful of the reasons you lose them, and pay attention to that.
Okay.
We're losing a fine HR generalist, who we share with the schools and the town. He's becoming an assistant Town Manager, so that's not an opportunity we had for him. He's jumping up several levels, and good for him. We give our employees good opportunities, good training, and when things like this happen, we're happy for them. You know, that's what an employer is supposed to do, and we'll do it all over again. So you can't stop turnover, especially in such a strong market. But you have to understand why.
So the one other topic that we probably should discuss as a goal relates to the police chief hiring activities. If I remember correctly, two years ago, when the DPW Director was being hired, that was one of the goals that was actually on here.
Mm-hmm.
And it's somewhat operational, but it actually is quite distinct.
The board actually told me. The Board actually told me specifically to take that off.
Which one?
Police chief. Not to include something we would have to do. It's operational. I'll do whatever you like, but, because that was the discussion with the DPW Director one, is that does not belong as a goal. Now, any Board member can have their own opinion, so I'm not giving mine.
Yeah, I mean, I think this, if we look at what's happening on this list, none of these are specific to the operations side of maybe emergency management, right, and capital.
Right.
Yeah, but the idea with, there's his standard job description, and then there's separate expectations that we as a Board have for him. Hiring the police chief, in my opinion, somewhere behind the DPW Director, falls under general job description of making sure we have the appropriate staff.
I would agree with you, except that it's actually a distinct process. And it's not kind of, it's not, I don't mean run-of-the-mill, but I'm going to say run-of-the-mill. It's not your run-of-the-mill hire. This is actually, no, a very important activity for the town. And I did bring it up with a little bit of hesitation, because it is somewhat operational. But on the other hand, it is maybe one of the most important things to take place in this fiscal year.
If I could respond, I agree that it's extremely important. It's covered under his normal job description, and as such, he has to, well, I think we wanted to make these goals to be a set of goals that sort of the Board had and was asking Bob to target.
Above and beyond.
Yeah, it's sort of above and beyond.
I mean, obviously, the operations ones tend to fit within that, but...
If you look at these 12, none of them have to happen.
Yeah.
Some of them should happen or ought to happen, but none of them have to happen. They are over and above, as you say. And that's from my past discussions with the Board, that was your preference. I'll do anything you want. Not the problem. You're going to hear about the police chief hiring process, because this Board has to approve it. So you'll get the full story, whether it's a goal or not.
Right.
It's also part of, as part of the charter, that he has responsibility to have to do. It's a more visible aspect of his job.
In the past, we would have this slew of goals, which was just part of his job description, and we didn't really feel that was meaningful, but rather, what sort of direction is the Board looking to take through the Town Manager? I think these are...
Now, I will note, though, that as part of this is, so these goals I view as separate from the fuller evaluation, because the full evaluation, like any employee evaluation, should review how an employee is doing in all aspects of their job. So that part will still happen for all those job descriptions, items, if you will. And these are separate.
I'm comfortable moving that discussion to the review format. Too late, but I sent some information to Bob, just some suggestions I had seen. I looked at a couple other towns and cities and found some evaluation forms. Should to the next discussion. Is there, there are cases in reviews, but there's not an overall review. We only review by category and not overall performance.
Okay.
Which is a little bit unusual.
Let's table that down, because that is the next item on the agenda. But as far as the goals for the remainder of 19 and then the first half '20, are we comfortable with this and adding Ann's point on perhaps under community for communication and customer service or just customer service?
Well, now I'm wondering, given your point, that it is kind of part of the general job description, and we can about, sorry, given that it's part of the general job description, even if not literally, may not be in the charter, but it's an expectation, I think, of everyone that Town Hall and the Town Manager serve the community and its residents, then it's certainly something that could be evaluated as part of the annual evaluation and does not need to be a goal, because I think it's inherent to the position. I certainly would hope that Town Hall would go above and beyond in its customer service, but I don't think it's above and beyond expectations of the job.
Right.
I'm sort of torn on this one, because this one was mentioned last year in the evaluation as an area of interest to some Board members, and so, and as an area that could see improvement on the customer service side. So it could be a goal for the remainder of the year to separate from.
Yeah, I mean, I think Bob's aware of that concern, and we have, and you're going to probably tell me that HR will be reporting this in the next meeting, but, for example, under the public service aspect, customer satisfaction, it's somewhere in some policy we do have a statement that says a suggestion box or something like that will be placed at each counter, and, you know, maybe they'll be instituting that, I don't know. But those are things that do fall under the day-to-day operation.
I think, you know, if we choose to include it, I do think we need to provide more specifics, other than customer service. So I'd be comfortable adding it if that's the feeling of the Board, but I would want to make sure that we establish what the expectation is around that topic.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking at the employee attraction and retention. To me, that one feels somewhat similar, not the topic, but the focus that we're asking to be placed on.
Right, it is.
I would personally...
Fair point, fair point.
Yes, some of these things, again, were, you know, best practices and things to do, but when it's a goal, that means you're going to get a report on it, where you normally wouldn't get a report on employee retention and retention. So that's another distinction. Again, I don't really mind what you do, but last year, in the budget process, there were funds set aside specifically for employee training. That was a discussion through the budget process, and so, you know, customer service, if you will, made more sense in conjunction to the budget that was there. Now we're back to the same old budget. But again, I don't mind. I think Vanessa's idea about, you know, is there something specific that you're interested in, is, would be helpful.
So we could, you know, I think we should, given the timeline, go on this set of goals. What we can do, if we're as open to it, is add customer service as a goal under community. However, at a future meeting, and I mean a very near future meeting, we would need to set aside 20 minutes to define what that looks like.
I think we can certainly, we can and should certainly do that. I think where I'm, where my mind is is similar to some of the things that we, some of the goals that I hope that we will be accomplishing with our work on the Select Board communications policy, which is responsiveness and completion in our response to residents. So that's a goal for the Board. Hopefully, it can similarly be a goal for Town Hall generally.
So is everyone comfortable with that? We'll add this, and then we'll add it to a future agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, changes that you'd like to make to these goals? What's happened with them? All right. Do we have, I don't think we need to move, we don't need to...
Maybe you don't need a motion on that. I'll accept your comments as instruction.
Great. So next up, we'll be reviewing the actual form for the Town Manager evaluation. Now, there are in the packets some comments from Andy.
Yes.
Regarding the, how the rankings are organized. That is on page 83, and then the form itself starts on page 85. So Mark, since you, in particular, had reviewed other old towns' forms, do you specifically have suggestions or open it up?
And I apologize for not getting to them in advance. So a couple of quick comments. One is that we have a summary of each section of goals and an opportunity to make comments, but there's not really an overall summary rating, if you will. And my thought was that that would be a good addition to it, part of the summary section. So we kind of have it by section and then overall. It could either be at the beginning or page 10, which is kind of the end of everything. Turns out there's a blank page sitting there.
Yeah.
And I was waiting if that might be the place. You know, each of the sections allows for comments on the criteria of goals and standards, but any comments beyond these in general feedback and suggestions and ideas for the future, there isn't really a place for that.
And do you have, do you have a example from another town that you could provide us with that we could maybe, so we don't have to recreate?
I don't, but I actually think it should be free-form.
Free-form?
Right. In other words, it's more of a comment section, overall comments.
As opposed to a 1 to 10?
As opposed to a 1 to 10?
No, 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 I...
Yeah, I think that it's more, everything here is very prescribed and specific to each of the activities, and that's, you know, for the specific goals, that's great. Because as we just discussed, there's kind of the overall, how's it going, if you will? And maybe that's an opportunity to offer feedback from members.
So it would be something like additional comments?
I think you mean like a summary.
Yeah, summary, I think is a better way of putting it. I forget how the superintendent's has worded, but there's something to that effect. I think there's value to it, and I think it allows, if something doesn't quite fit into a specific goal, but it's actually something you want to say, there's a place to put it.
I think that's great. So Bob, as I went through this, I realized some of these are previous years, so for example, like the DPW Director. You know, now that would be the police chief.
Well, these are last year's goals, though, that you're going to evaluate beyond.
Oh, right, when you're back, when you're forward.
You just flipped what I did.
Yeah, I flipped it, okay.
Is the Board comfortable, you know, just because this is a written document doesn't mean it's right. Is the Board comfortable that, for instance, goals are the first thing discussed, and then there's other aspects? You know, this is really an opportunity to, if you will, throw it out and put it the way you'd like it, whatever makes you most comfortable. This just happened to be a form we used in 2015.
Yeah.
I don't think the order matters for me.
Do you, Bob?
No, I don't think so.
It does kind of jumps right into it, but...
It gets very detailed-oriented right away, and then maybe if Mark's suggestion is used, it sort of leads to the summary at the end, instead of most documents are the other way. But I...
Yeah, no, I think you're right, and that's why I think I struggle too, saying that a summary looks like it fits right with page one, yet it really is much better at page 10.
Right, so you could flip the whole document, really.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting suggestion.
Actually, in previous years, at the beginning of the evaluation, there was a little box, and I forget what it was titled.
General eval of Town Hall. I mean, there is one, if you look at page, it's 88 of the packet, but it's step 3. At summary level, evaluator comments on attainment of goals and performance of standards. I mean, that seems to me the summary box.
Yeah.
Because it's goal and performance on standards.
88.
Page 88 of APF.
I think, Mark, one of the issues maybe you're having with this is the same one I am, that from a marketing standpoint, this is a hard document to read. The information might be good, but it doesn't jump out at you.
It's a little clunky, but that's okay.
Yeah, and I actually, maybe I'm wrong, but I looked at that, your page 88 has a follow-up from 86 to 87. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's how I read it, and I think it's because it kind of is kind of clunky to use. So you're step 1, right, and then, you know, I fill in, you know, met, didn't meet, exceeded. Then there are these indicators based on leadership, management, and community, and then step 3 is kind of comments about those. So are you generally speaking?
So may I?
If, for instance, if Mark has time and is willing, I'm happy to work with him, you know, off-site, if you will, and just improve the form.
That was actually going to be my exact recommendation, if Mark would be willing.
Do you have time? Yeah, I'll wait time.
Can you, given the fact that we're already behind in when we should have completed this assessment?
What have I done for last week?
Perfect, okay.
I'm impressed.
Can you have this done for our next meeting?
I'm a little busy last week.
Two weeks. Yes, let's sit down.
Okay. Bob, does that work for you?
It does. Your meeting is full, so it has to be a relatively short discussion, but...
Well, I think the way we will organize that is, this is the new form.
Right.
Unless you object.
Unless there is some strong objection, we are not having further discussion on it, the evaluation will take place at X. I mean, I want to...
And I can certainly circulate that with Board members and get feedback before the meeting, if that's helpful.
That's fine. All feedback would go to Bob.
Yeah.
Right. We need to get this done. Could I just ask, I don't like the did not meet, met, exceeded. As I said, they're very black and white. They're a bit harsh, I think. And so I just looked at other examples online where they use did not meet expectation. That's not the best, but what if, what if something is met, he's done 70% of the goal, right? What do you give him? Met, did not meet?
Would you like a five-point scale as opposed to a three?
Interestingly enough.
I mean, something for you to consider, Mark, is all, I guess. We don't need to get into it now, but I've never been comfortable with that. It's like pass fail exceeds. It's too, it's too black and white, and it doesn't really reflect, you know...
It's hard to make, it's hard to make a choice.
Yeah, and sometimes it has nothing to do with, I mean, it's beyond Bob's control, that he can't.
Right. I actually remember doing some in-between last year for just that reason.
Yeah, so the five-point, just as an example, goes from rarely meets the standard, usually does not meet, generally meets, generally exceeds, almost always exceeds. Five points.
I think the five-point works. If so, we convert this, all of these to a five-point scale, that'll give us a little bonus, but, does that work?
What other quick things are? There were a couple of very interesting things. So this, the one that I found was a city manager one, so it's not exactly the same. But there were a couple of categories that were interesting that they included, and I have to do a little more homework to see why. But one of them, here's the category, relations with elected members of the governing body, policy execution, reporting, and citizen relations. So these are, you know, just kind of interesting categories that are, you know, structurally a bit different, and I don't think you're exactly right, given that we're not a city. But it was interesting, some of the, some of the things that are included in those categories.
Those are really interesting. Can I suggest, given the timeline that we're facing now, that we consider that for next year's evaluation? And Bob, could I ask you to put on the list of agenda items in, say, March, just right after the election, that this be one of the items that gets tackled sooner rather than later?
Sure. So that would be to approve an evaluation form for the year that we're still in, I guess?
So that, so that the evaluation form in the spring...
Is then used.
Is then used to help set goals and to evaluate... Is then used to help set goals and to evaluate for the following year. So we're trying to get ahead of it.
Yeah, remember in our policy that Vanessa, you and I were there last March when Dan and I presented the changes in policies on, in part this. And we are supposed, we were supposed to have set up a subcommittee to create a form, correct me if I'm wrong, but to review the town manager. And that was supposed to be, that's supposed to be, I think, reviewed every two years. So that should be, that job, that task, or whatever, for developing the new form should be done in subcommittee. Just look at our laws and follow, and follow.
I'm trying to think if we established a subcommittee for that.
I don't think you did. I think when Dan and Andy finished, it was just-
You, because what you had done was the actual policy.
Yep.
But not, but we had created a subcommittee. So let's, I, unless the board feels strongly about creating a subcommittee to create the form, I'm comfortable with having Mark sort of taking lead on that. Does that work?
For this one, right. But I think in the, in the future, we should try to follow our policies. And I felt a little bad when Bob sent all this stuff out and then I, you know, I recall, oops, we, we, this is something we should have done, so. And the other thing that's in that policy, which we should all probably go back and review, is, is important to provide ongoing feedback. In other words, it's not fair at the, at the end of the year just to say, you know, I didn't like this, I love, I love this. You know, both positive and negative.
Yeah, as a general rule, nothing in annual evaluation should come as a surprise.
Right.
Might ask a question?
Sure.
As part of the discussion with Andy and Dan, the idea of an evaluation form was forward-looking so that last spring, or whenever, the board would approve one to be used in the future, not backwards.
Correct.
So if you want to approve a different one in March, when is it for? It's, it's difficult if you're going to change the form from looking at goals in the middle of the year for me to go back to last July and change my behavior, if that's what would be required.
Agreed. No, it would need to be forward-looking because it's not fair to move goalposts on you.
Well, it would be difficult for you as well. So I just wanted to clarify kind of the timeline.
Yes.
So in the spring, your objective is to create a form that would, if you will, start on July first.
Yes.
And that is not the same as the evaluation that would come shortly thereafter. That's backward-looking.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Right. So I'm trying to avoid this scramble.
Yeah, I understand.
For what will amount to two years from now.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, cool.
All right, great. So Mark, you'll report back, lovely. Okay, so next up, we will be reviewing the, or changing, making the change to select board policy to change the number of members on ATRAC, the Human Relations Advisory Committee. So Anne, is this you?
This is me, yes. So the reason for the change is because ATRAC is finding itself in a position where they're struggling to find a quorum of people to meet. They're currently comprised officially of seven members, but with only five appointed. So they need four to meet and deliberate. And the reason this is particularly time-sensitive is to get the planning underway for the MLK Day breakfast and celebration. And so Bob and I worked with Josh Cole, also the chair of the Human Relations Advisory Committee, to come up with language that would allow all of the existing members to, you know, retain their membership and for the, for the committee to be able to meet with a quorum of three individuals. And so Bob put this language together. It's, it's simply a change from seven to five. And instead of saying that the committee shall include the following, the committee may include the following. And there are kind of an array of options of individuals.
So procedural question. So sorry, Anne, is that, that's all? Okay. Procedural question, Bob, can you remind me, do we need to have a hearing to ma- Okay.
No, Ray has said over in abundance a caution, we have too many hearings. You don't have to have hearings on all parts of your select board policy. This is one of them you don't.
Okay, as long as, yeah, that's fine. I, I think as a general practice, they're good for transparency. I think for this, it's, yeah. All right, any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move that the board change select board policy from section two point three point one, ATRAC membership from seven to five members as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, there was my hand in front of it.
Okay.
Discussion-
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. All right, so next up, we'll be voting on November town meeting warrant articles. So Bob, if you can walk us through this process?
Sometimes the board votes on articles. Many times it does not. It's the board's choice. If the board does want to take a position on any article and they want town meeting to see their position in writing, you have to do it this week. So it could either be tonight or tomorrow night at the financial forum. For instance, FinCom has voted on one article so far that involved the retirement board last week. They will presumably vote on the rest of the articles that are financial tomorrow. So that's, that's the background. The board is not obliged to vote on any articles. It can do what it wants. On one of these pages here, let's just see where I put it. I put a little explanation. I have it behind me here. By charter, both the finance committee and bylaw committee are advisory to town meeting, and their votes must be reported to town meeting, preferably in writing in advance when possible. Other volunteer boards and committees may also vote on warrant articles and when possible, those votes are noted herein with an asterisk next to their name. So the board had not done this until maybe four, or five, or six years ago, when it started to want to give town meeting their views on certain articles. And again, that's entirely, you're right. The board can also just stand up at town meeting and speak individually if you haven't taken a vote collectively.
All right.
So, you know, any of these articles are fair game. Probably the natural gas one is more important, I would have to say, than the others. I don't think any article is necessarily out of bounds for you. You know, there's no, no votes on reports, for instance, but otherwise, any of these is fair game.
So Bob, in the past, have these been voted on one at a time or in its entirety?
Boards have done it both ways. They put every article in and then asked which ones need to be pulled out of sort of a consent agenda, or one at a time, somewhat painfully.
Why don't we, unless someone, unless you really want to go through one at a time, I would recommend doing the consent agenda approach, which is that we move to vote on all articles and then-
I guess I'd start with article three and then right through to the end.
Okay, and then if anyone wants to pull them, then we can pull those out separately.
Is there, do we feel that there's a value to voting on all of them? The only one that I think it, that there would be a lot of value in voting on is article seventeen because I think it might result in some confusion for town meeting members if they see that it's presented by two board members. They may think that it's not, that the other three board members couldn't approve it by omission.
Right, sure. I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I, I assume town meeting is hip to the fact that a warrant can get, an article can get a warrant if two or more select board members or if ten, ten or more residents sign a petition.
I wouldn't make that assumption.
I wouldn't make that assumption.
I wouldn't make that assumption, right. Okay, okay. So I, I agree. I'd also like to add, before we start to get into it, something different than what Anne was saying. And that is that if we decide to vote on the budget articles, if we could hold off on that until after the FinCom meeting and, or until-
The financial forum, I think.
The financial forum tomorrow night. And then we could vote tomorrow night. I'd be happy to do that. I'd just like to hear, to be better informed is to, yes.
Just out of curiosity, how many of you are planning to attend tomorrow night? Okay.
I guess we are.
There is one thing that is not in the warrant report that there will be a meeting on tomorrow night. Before the meeting involves schools. So the budget articles will change. Something will change. And that's really all I feel like I can say at this point. So waiting on those articles is probably appropriate. That's articles three or four, maybe both.
Yeah. So I agree, Anne, that article seventeen is one. I'm wondering, there's some other ones here where I'm wondering if it makes sense for us to take a position. In other words, if we were just saying, let's just do seventeen, I would say eight. I can find it, I wrote right.
Is that the retirement board one or not?
No, I say that one because we weren't really involved.
Oh, that's the debt rescission.
Yeah, so that's the rescission of debt.
Article eight?
Article eight.
Page one oh five PDF.
I have it behind me also.
Oh, that's right. This came from an instructional motion.
Just see if the town will vote to amend the votes.
The permetto lights, yeah.
So this is rescission of unused, unspent.
Yeah, I have that on page one oh four. I just want to make sure that I'm not-
I mean, it's article eight.
Yeah. Article eight, okay.
So to me, that was one I thought we should talk about, eleven. Which is-
Rubbish.
Yeah, rubbish and extending contracts.
I had a question on that, if I could ask, Bob.
Certainly.
Is it, is it correct, if I understood it correctly, that we have, we created a ten-year contract with a five-year renewal?
For one part of the rubbish system, yeah.
Right.
Collection, not disposal.
Collection, not disposal. Okay, okay.
And I will tell you that the market is in such chaos now that giving the town permission to do this may not be in the best interest of the town. It's, it's chaos right now. It's a monopoly. And many area towns are in our boat. It's very unpleasant.
I'm sorry, you said, it's what?
There may not be an attractive ten-year contract offered to us. So it might be a short-term deal. I'm just, you know, reflecting on what the marketplace is right now. But you don't know between now and June what may change. So, you know, having the authorization still seems like a good idea.
So you said it was chaos and it was a monopoly?
There's one vendor right now that will provide the service. And that vendor will charge whatever it wants to charge. Almost to the point where I'm, I said today to Jane, I'm almost to the point of asking our legislators for help because it's a very difficult situation. And it's, I don't know, it's complicated. But nonetheless, I think the flexibility and the permission ideas is still reasonable. But, you know, again, if, if my decision were today, we would not be doing a ten-year contract.
By the way, we just, off to the side for a sec, we have some residents in town who are very familiar with the situation and are in the business, so to speak. Currently in the business. Wonder if it'd be worth contact.
Guessing that we may have talked to at least one of them.
Okay. It's another one of the, the Viva Road neighbors.
Actually, I didn't know that part, so I'll have to check. I thought they were all spoken for with different things, but this is a new one.
There's still other people on the road.
So continuing on with what we have, articles that should be removed, we have eight, eleven.
Sorry, removed.
Bob?
So I think Anne had suggested something opposite of what you had suggested, if I heard it right. Anne, I thought you were suggesting only certain articles we would vote on, whereas I think you're suggesting we'll vote on all of them unless we pull them off. Did I hear you right?
I mean, it ends up at the same point, so.
Right, so the list I was suggesting was articles to vote on, not to remove.
I want to look at the back, let's, all right, hold on. I will look up and check if I have. Yes.
Right.
We're challenging this evening.
I might ask you to vote on article twelve, which is senior tax relief.
That's for when I was-
Yeah, so eight, eleven, twelve, I was going to say thirteen also. Thirteen.
So there are numerous bylaws.
Which has happened now, one of us.
So there's, there's, from a bylaw one that has been presented to us, there's thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Are all bylaws. And sixteen. And these have been presented to us. So we may be better off with mine. That's the way we're going.
Well, either way, let's just make sure that whatever list you're taking, we agree it's either in or it's out.
Yeah.
It's not either or.
Can we just go through them in numerical order?
That's reasonable.
And, and I think we agreed that, what, Bob, the first three?
So skip three and four for tonight.
So that brings us to five.
There is a bill, as you can see.
I'm sorry, Bob?
There is an unpaid bill, so there is, article five will be on town meeting.
Yeah. I have no problem voting on that.
All right, so hold on.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is it, is it the feeling of the board, would people rather vote on more of these or less? Is there a, any general opinion?
I mean, I think, you know, the consent agenda approach, which is that we vote on everything unless it's pulled in.
So I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm questioning that approach. If our mission was, we should pretty much vote on everything, then I completely agree with your approach. And I just want to, before we say that, let's go the other way, which says, should we only vote on ones that we, we really kind of want to have a strong say on?
So that's more of a philosophical discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can, frankly, I can go either way. But I was approaching it from, rather than vote on everything, maybe we just vote on certain ones where we think it is, it makes a point to town meeting.
I think that, well, let me ask Bob this. If we don't vote on something like article five, does it appear like, does it give the appearance that, that we're agnostic to it or we don't care about it or?
I honestly don't think it gives any appearance.
Doesn't give any appearance, it doesn't matter.
I think that's why I was just suggesting the one was because that was one where I think there could be confusion.
I would agree, there is an appearance on that.
There's, it's, it's, it looks a little bit like only two members have approved this article.
So my concern was that if we don't say vote on article five,
So my concern was that if we don't say vote on Article Five, it looks like we're not supporting, supporting our staff, or?
No, I think it's fine.
I think if it said select board report, if the select board voted, you know, zero, zero, five in opposition, then I think it was all right.
That would be meaningful, yes.
Okay, fine, then I have no preference.
I think senior tax relief might also be an exception where it's a petition of the legislature, it feels like it's a courtesy.
Okay, so do we want to go through these now numerically and decide which ones we want to vote on?
Yes, let's go through, we'll decide which ones we do want to vote on, and if that number becomes large, we can vote en masse.
Yes.
All right, so. Article Three. To include or not to include?
I would include it, but wait till tomorrow night's finish.
Mark, Anne?
That's fine, I agree.
Either way, I think that decision is made for voting on these, then we should, we should do the best we can, if not all.
Yeah, I would be inclined to agree. Okay, Four.
Same, same feeling. Look, I don't want to overinfluence things here. If you guys feel that it's, it's not important, but we are involved with the budget. I mean, and, and, and so.
I mean, I'd be inclined to vote tonight, because at this point, it's not changing.
Well, Bob said that it's changed.
Tomorrow will change. Tomorrow it may change.
Schools.
I missed that part. All right, so let's flag those as sort of separate and move to Article Five.
Yeah. And this one we said?
This is the outstanding bill. So this one we should vote on tonight.
Article Five is outstanding? Oh, yes.
It's not standing bill.
Be tabled. Seven will also be tabled.
Since I always present it as the FinCom number.
All right, seven will also be tabled. All right. Eight, Mark, this is one of the ones you had flagged that we should.
I think we should.
Okay, Andy, Anne, pick up a vote.
It's fine. Yeah, I think we should, yeah.
Nine. This is an increase to the cost of living base for retirement.
Did any of us, because I didn't attend the, this presentation at FinCom last week?
I did not attend.
I did not.
I don't feel prepared, really, to.
Okay, so Nine is a no.
I had a question on Ten. I don't understand it, just to be honest. I read it a number of times and I.
I wrote it a number of times and it was still a little confusing. Typically, the town is not in this business. Typically, when a development happens, the developer hires a monitoring agent forever, because it's usually a firm. In this case, they hired a smaller firm, and unfortunately, the monitoring agent passed away. So the developer was long gone, out of town, not affiliated with the project anymore. It had been sold, it was a conduit association. So the town felt it was obliged to step in and fill that gap, as the monitoring agents were a period of time. And then staff came to you asking for you to appoint the monitoring agent, which we did.
Yeah.
The monitoring agent, when hired by a developer, does not have a three year contract, can have any contract, or just an open ended contract. It's difficult to find monitoring agents. I can assure you that it would be better to offer the monitoring agent a five or a ten year contract, and they'd be more agreeable to then sign up. So we got away with it this time. They understood it was a three year limit, it was an emergency. But it would be helpful to have the ability to do this longer, and also, this is something I hope you don't ever see again, because it's going to be rare.
I'd be inclined to support this one.
Me too.
Okay. Eleven.
That's the.
Just a waste one?
Yeah, I think we should vote on that.
Fine with that. Andy, Anne?
Yes, yes.
Twelve is tax relief. I think we should vote on that definitely.
Agreed.
Oh, yeah.
Thirteen is marijuana.
My question on that, Bob, Vanessa, is okay, is this simply, so I read through it a number of times, and it appears that this is simply a definition change, and it will affect how things, how we do things on the ground.
So we had actually received a presentation by this, and yes, it's to make it, it's to keep the town in line with the state.
State, right.
Level definitions.
Yes.
However, if we do nothing, if we do not have town meeting pass this, then we would be obliged under our zoning to kick CBD out of town. Because technically, it fits in the definition of marijuana, and we've banned it. So this is going along with state law, this is also creating a more flexible definition to allow CBD to stay until someone else determines.
Yes.
Whether it should stay or go.
Is that going to be presented?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we want to support? So there are, again, there's Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, so there's four articles that are zoning bylaw related that have been put in front of us previously.
Yeah, I mean.
And I'm not going to be able to help you on some of these other zoning ones. I know that first one pretty well.
Right.
I remember these presentations.
That's good.
That mixed use one.
Yeah.
One question, sorry to go back. I don't disagree in theory with the idea of voting on authorizing the town manager to enter into the contract. This is Article Eleven, but just from Mark's comment, oh, there are some residents who are in the business, who have some views about this. Is there, is there information that's going to come out at town meeting that would, you know, that's?
No.
Going to influence?
I don't think that's the case. I was more thinking as a resource.
Okay.
Perhaps, and that's not helpful.
All right, thank you.
We're looking for any and all resources.
Very good.
All right, so back to the tip, so let's take the four zoning bylaw ones together, just Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, and Sixteen. Is this something, so these have been put before us as a board?
Yes. So the, so, so the definition of marijuana, et cetera, and have.
The mixed use one.
And the CBD oils. From what I've read, they have little psychoactive properties. They don't have, you know, their psychoactive properties are very small, if any. But I'm not on the board of health anymore, I sort of, it'd be nice to have them weigh in on this, if they have concerns about.
We've asked them to discuss it, if they will, if they have time. We've also had a discussion at Arcasa. It's really the great unknown. There is no scientific data outside. There's concerns, but there's no evidence.
I'd be inclined to keep us in line with state standards at this point, since it seems to be a moving target anyway.
So since, since this was being put in front of town meeting, and CPDCs had had a public hearing that was advertised, we were able to instruct our building inspectors not to enforce the zoning. That's, that's what you do. Otherwise, we would have had to enforce the zoning on a couple of shops in town that were advertising CBD, and any restaurant or establishment that was even selling CBD as part of the product. It would have been very difficult to enforce, number one. And because there was no scientific evidence, quote unquote, we were a little uncomfortable doing that. So that's why we wanted to have town meeting decide.
Yeah.
So again, Thirteen, Fourteen, Fifteen, and Sixteen, we have four articles that are zoning bylaw related. Are we supporting or not? I'm going to start calling out people.
It's scrolling. And for the zoning articles, so you know, FinCom and the bylaw committee do not typically have reports on these. It's CPDC. The FinCom would not vote, but.
Yeah. I think that's a better idea. The only question, Thirteen is a bit of an enforcement issue. So we should just think that through, right? Because this is creating a definition for hemp. And there's one key paragraph here. An affirmative vote for this amendment will change the definition of marijuana and add a definition of hemp. It will not change the town's existing regulations for medical marijuana, or the town's existing prohibition, prohibition of commercial marijuana establishments. So it really is quite specific. Its impact, it relates to the CBD businesses in town and any, any others that might choose to, to do things. And into the comment of, we don't have scientific data, so I think that's exactly what's happening right now with.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
It's exactly the issue.
So I'm going to focus us back. We have four articles, four zoning. If we are not comfortable supporting them, then we need to move on.
I say take them off.
Okay. Andy, Anne, are you comfortable with that one?
Yes.
All right, so now we're on to Seventeen. Which is the gas leaks piece. I trust that Anne and Mark, you have both reviewed it, the document that was circulated?
I have.
Do you have, you're comfortable with the background as written? Because this would be one that we would be voting on as a board in order to have it listed as select board, as opposed to two members.
Yeah, so I think that, well, two things. It wouldn't be, it would still be sponsored by you and I, that's how it's on the article.
Correct, yes, excuse me.
This would just be a vote to say you all are in favor of the article or not.
Sorry, are you saying we're also voting on the background document?
No, no.
Well, the background document just provides the clarity that we have discussed, so it sort of answers some of the questions that have been raised a few meetings ago.
And David Zeke is going to do a presentation, I assume, at town meeting. I'm sorry. Right.
And then Andy and I are.
Yeah. I've been to these multi-town initiatives, and I've learned a lot, so I'll probably say a few, very few brief introductory words.
I think it should be on.
All right, so Seventeen, Anne, are you comfortable voting? Okay. Eighteen. I would like to vote on Eighteen. This is to recognize Frank Franks.
Yes.
I think it would be, I'm going to go out on a limb and say that John would also support this.
Pretty sure. Yeah.
All right, so we have chosen to vote on about half of them, Five, Eight, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Seventeen, and Eighteen.
Yes, and then Three and Four.
And then Three and Four, Mark. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to, oh, how do we do it? Move to it.
Recommend to town.
Recommend, thank you. Yeah, so hang on, let me use the words that you've already got here, right?
Could you give me two sentences about Francis Frank Franks?
The petitioners are, have promised to give us something in writing this week, in terms of background.
Support. Got it? Okay. Okay, so can I make a single motion?
Yes.
Move to support, I've got them. Move to support Articles Five, Eight, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Seventeen, and Eighteen.
I was just hoping to learn a little bit about Francis Frank Franks.
Oh, about him?
Yes.
Oh, Bob, would you like to, would you do the honors?
I can do part of the honors.
We need to.
Frank was a firefighter for many years, retired, then became a part time veterans agent for many years, had served in the military for many years prior to becoming a firefighter, and passed away sadly a couple of years or so ago. Some of the residents that lived near him came in and visited the board with different ideas of how to support his memory, changing the name of their street, then they fired, then they found out it was named after retired fire chief, so they didn't think that was a great idea. And then his, I asked Matt, who's friendly with one of his daughters, and Kevin Bullmiller as well, to just ask what the two daughters thought, and they are fine with this approach in terms of honoring Frank.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion. All those in favor? Great. Okay. So next up, we will be discussing setting priorities for the select board goals. Bob, do we have, I see we go from the warrant to the minutes. Do we have the goals handy somewhere?
Let me see if I can find them online.
I think they're somewhere online.
Yeah.
They're on the select board.
You can start minutes while online.
I see.
Yeah, I'm trying to find them as well. On the select board page, top. So I have, is it the same document as liaisons?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Does everybody have it handy?
It should be behind me.
And it's the first one. All right. So the reason we added this one to the agenda is because there have been various discussions as far as administratively, how we move through, you go to the select board page, go to the very top, and it's the liaisons one, like way on the left. Yes, like this.
Yes, select board subcommittee.
So we've had conversations sort of about how we conduct many meetings administratively to get through the necessary items on our agenda, and this includes presentations from town staff, presentations from various organizations or groups within the community, the items that need to be voted on and approved so that the town manager can move forward with the operations of the town. And then we, as the board, in the past couple of years, have set, established numerous subcommittees and goals for ourselves. So one of the things we seem to be struggling with as a board is making adequate progress on these goals. So the idea here is to discuss a way of prioritizing these, reprioritizing how we organize our meetings, and how much time we allow. So it's really meant to be a broad discussion on how we make progress. In previous discussions, we've heard, you know, the, previous discussions I've had have included things like not having liaison reports in the beginning, which would save us time at the start of the meeting, and allow us to have more in-depth conversations. I've heard allocating more time for individual topics. You know, tonight, we had twenty minutes allocated for our town accountant, we went to forty-five. So the only reason we recovered is because we continue to hearing until a future meeting. So as we think about priorities, goal setting, and meeting efficiency, we need to do better. So with that in mind, the board has various subcommittees. There is communications subcommittee, which Anne and I are on. There is the capital projects subcommittee, which John and I are on. There's the housing trust, which is Mark and Andy, the new EDC, which is also Mark and Andy, and our multi-payments, which is Mark and myself. Plus the ADHOC Committee for Human Rights, and we'll sort of leave it there. What are the priorities of the board? Of these, and of the various topics, I mean, if we, if we look at this handy dandy packet of other topics that we need, it's not in this one, that we want to discuss, and that we want presented, what does that look like? Because we can't have.
Right. So I think that you're talking about when we complete one of these projects, we come to the board, and the board needs to discuss them.
Yes.
And you're suggesting that there's not enough time in our schedule in the next months to review all these goals as they come to fruition.
That's part of it, but more broadly, there's not enough time in the agenda to discuss them all to the extent that we have been discussing things. We talk too much.
I think that's one of the issues. At the risk that you may shoot me, Vanessa.
Mark?
I wrote up a statement I'd like to read that takes this up multiple levels and has a suggestion on perhaps on how to proceed. So if you'll indulge me, it'll only take me a couple of minutes, but my concern is that as I look at that list, it doesn't really reflect our, it doesn't reflect my priorities as a board member, and I don't think it reflects what we need to get done. Some of the things, yes, but it's not, I wouldn't say that we've done our job by getting those things done. So let me try. So, okay, briefly. I really enjoy working with the board. That said, I think that with multiple liaison responsibilities and how we're structured to discuss and deal with issues, we're not as effective as we can be, nor as expeditious. I think we need to set goals as individuals and as a board to highlight what we'd like to bring to the town in addition to our mandated responsibilities, e.g., licensing activities, et cetera. Last week, I attended a meeting with Bob, sponsored by Marpa and the State Division of Local Services. I met with.
What is Marpa?
The Mass Association of.
I forget.
Regional.
Oh, yes, exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
I didn't actually know.
That's right. I met with the town administrator from Wakefield, Steve Mayo. He told me about a retreat that the town council had recently undertaken, and the great opportunity. opportunity and results that he felt was accomplished from this meeting. I suggest we consider doing this ASAP and before the holidays. As I look at kind of the priorities that I see for myself, for the board, and what I would hope that the board would consider as their priorities as well, not meaning to be complete, but in terms of where I think I can have an impact. Number one, housing and economic development plan. The EDC is a piece of it. High-level marketing of the town and dovetailing plans to achieve this one piece at a time, which follows up from the meeting we had last week and the presentation we received. Assure downtown and other businesses in town can thrive through business with local residents and visitors. Assure that we can achieve and maintain at least ten percent affordable housing that includes housing options for elders, workers, and middle class. Advocate for the arts and the planning process. That's all housing and economic development. Two, aging adult population resources. Again, the Marpa thing was helpful. With residents wanting to stay in Redding, we need to exploit the best resources to support the community. And I include a community center for mixed generations as an item that should be on this discussion list. Three, work with fellow board members to make government and the select board in particular more expeditious, responsive, and efficient. A way to allow for presentations, questions, and recommendations in a connected manner that maintains momentum, not necessarily at the same night, but in short order. And I think that the select board retreat with Bob and a moderator, which is the other thing that Steve Mayo said would be really helpful. They actually use someone who we can't use because it's a Redding employee. And number four, assure that we can encourage and draw volunteers from the community and cherish them, respect and opportunity. To me, those are four priorities. My guess is some of them may overlap with other members and some of them, you know, other members may have other things. But I think we need to kind of, that list, I felt very constrained and I didn't feel like stuff that I think is priority was getting done. So yes, we're spending too much time on discussions. I think we need to figure out how to set our priorities and how to accomplish it.
So I actually agree with all of that. There's obviously some that I might change a little bit. And I think the struggle we have as a board is that we don't have time to look at the bigger picture because of the agenda and how it stands, right? So when I had brought this separately on how to deal with it administratively, we cannot allocate an hour to ask questions of the town accountant and allocate an hour to discuss the speaker picture, economic development, housing. We simply can't do it. So from a timeliness perspective, there's a few ways to go about it. We talk less, we have more meetings, we hack presentations down, which I think we have already, I have been doing for the last several months, but we have an hour allocated for the tax classification, and I asked Bob to have Victor do a ten-minute presentation, which means fifty minutes is being allocated for us to talk and service. So I, and I'm being blunt here, so, you know, I've spoken about this. Other towns do this in ten minutes.
Right.
We are incapable of doing that historically. So I agree with you, and I think as far as finding a way to do it, we talk less or we meet more. I don't think a weekend retreat is going to fix this.
Well, I think that the discussion of it altogether, it will be very helpful, but I do have a specific suggestion.
All yours.
As far as tonight's presentations were, if we review the presentations ourselves in advance and ask our questions, pose the questions not here but to the presenter, a la Victor. So Victor, I saw his presentation, I've already gone back and forth with Victor, I've got all my questions answered about his presentation. I'm prepared to do the classification in ten minutes.
Bob, I'm curious, when we ask that the board provide you with questions in advance, how often does every member do that?
Virtually never.
Thank you.
Well, maybe that's something we talk about at the retreat. I think there are ways to change how we operate.
I agree with you, and I, and part of what you're seeing right now is frustration on my part. So I agree, and I'm certainly open to that. I mean, I'll be honest, not everyone reads the packet in advance at the meeting.
Agreed, but I think that that is a cause of a lot of time that gets spent at the meeting, because people haven't read it, and you're reacting to it, and you're asking your questions, a lot of which could have been anticipated in advance.
Okay. So you and I have talked a lot, I'd like to.
Well, so, so I began these goals when I was chair last year in an effort to, we had been talking about various things, and I wanted us to have a discussion about what were the top five things that we really wanted to attack above and beyond our regular work. And I still think that's very important for us to do. Have, so, so in order to better serve the town, we're actually accomplishing, we have something we can show the town, yeah, we've done all of this stuff, but in addition, we've done these period four things this year to help run the town more efficiently or improve part of the town or something like that. So I think we need to have goals, and I think we need to have subcommittees that work on those goals. And I think we either, some have moved quickly, some have moved slowly. So I think this is, it's a great time to reassess these goals and decide, maybe, maybe we can't tackle this one or that one. These were, as you say, you feel constricted, Mark, of course, because these were goals that were established last year by a different board.
Right.
So, so, and, but not all of them were completed, so they get carried over into this year. And I think it's totally appropriate to discuss, you know, in ones where we have not made any progress, do we want to make, keep that as a goal? So that's my feeling on this. I think we should go through it, decide where have we just not made progress, let it go, it ain't happening, and move on. As far as making our meetings run more efficiently, I think Vanessa's going to be very kind in asking all of our opinions about how the meeting should be run. But ultimately, one of the chair's duties under, under our policy is to, is to run the meeting. And so if she thinks that we're going on too long, she has the ability to say, you know, starting a year or repeating themes or something, and cut us off and say we can't spend this much time. Or she can let us go long.
Generally isn't well-received.
It isn't, but sometimes.
So I just, I want to be fair.
I know, but sometimes I think if I'm drooling on, you need to say, you know, thank you, Andy, I'd like to hear from other members. And, and sometimes that's needed, you know?
Yes. And I think, though, there needs to be a little bit more self-policing.
Yes. Yeah, but, but, you know, some of us are talkers, and, and we will try to self-police, but ultimately, we handed that over to you.
A walk gabble, you, Andy.
Yeah. No, I mean, not gabble, but just, just say.
Thrall me.
You know, okay, thanks, I'd like to hear from other members.
And on that note.
And keep it moving.
I do, I do really like Mark's idea of a retreat, because I think there, you have a very hard job in trying to get us through all of the necessary business, but the opportunity and a retreat would be a fantastic opportunity to do that kind of high-level goal-setting, thinking beyond the business that just has to get done, kind of beyond the minimum requirements of the job, but to kind of have a visioning process for the board and the community. I really like that a lot. And one of, many of the things Mark said resonated, but something that I certainly came in tonight thinking about in terms of, of a priority is some of the work that Vanessa and I have been doing on communications, and I think was also on my mind when I brought up the concept of customer service for town manager, well, the whole, the whole concept of, of getting back to people and being responsive and making sure that the, you know, for us, for us elected board members, but the people who've elected us and those who did, whether or not they voted for us, the people that we serve, that we are responsive to them and their concerns, and that, you know, all of these emails that, that come in are included in the packet have not only a timely response, which I know Mark provides, but a full response and a complete response. And that's certainly something that's of concern. And the people that come in and tell us something in public comment, and then it, and then the lube is never closed there. Or, it may be, but there's not a consistent way of doing so. And I think one of Mark's points tonight was about that, that efficient response.
So one of the things we could consider, and we had talked about this previously, is the idea of having, so I think the idea of a retreat could have a lot of benefits. I think that would need to be the starting point. And then in order to continue the discussion, we could, as a board, choose to structure our meetings differently, which is to say, we meet every other week, unless we change how we handle ourselves individually as board members and how we contribute to these board meetings, there will never be enough time to then follow up on the brilliant ideas that will come from this retreat, okay? So one way to address that is to have meetings that are dedicated to these follow-up topics, these broader picture goals. Because I'll be honest, sometimes it is hard to shift gears and have these high-level discussions when we've just been in the nitty-gritty of a legal document, right? It's a painful switch. So that is an option. Now, with that scenario, we do have to present such a fact that we need to request space, it needs to be recorded, staff has to be.
It does not need to be recorded.
Needs to be broadcast on RCTV.
Why?
So why was Steve able to do that without doing that?
It's your choice. When I say it needs to, RCTV is responsible for doing it unless instructed otherwise by the board. Maybe that's a better explanation. So they instructed Wakefield, we're not having TV. It's still an open public meeting.
Sure.
And anyone to come.
Right, right.
And there are minutes.
Yep.
But it was just not live on TV or recorded on TV for whatever reason. And I think five out of seven board members came, which in my opinion was less than ideal. I have no idea what goes on over there, but for you, I think you'd want full attendance.
Great. I think also if we talk about not broadcasting, that makes me a little nervous, because as we're having, if the, if the idea behind these separate meetings is to have these bigger-picture discussions, not broadcasting them, not on RCTV, not on YouTube, the community won't have access to those discussions. They won't be able to see them.
So the purpose of the retreat isn't just to get into.
The retreat itself.
Yeah?
I'm not saying we broadcast the retreat.
Oh, sorry, I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's.
No, so the retreat I wouldn't, no, that would be unreasonable. I think any follow-up meetings that happen separately from that.
Oh, absolutely.
To delve on that, those I would want, which lead us into the logistical challenges. I see.
What's the point of the retreat? I've heard two kind of different topics. One is to set goals or ideals, and one is to run meetings differently. Is it both or is it separate?
I think it's to run the meetings more efficiently.
What?
I think it's both. I think it's absolutely both. I think it's to get to the core of what it is that we think we want to accomplish and then to talk about how are we going to get that done, given our constraints.
Those are two very different discussions to put together.
I think one is more, what are the goals? And the second is how are we going to get them done? The reality is, we're not doing as, as much as we'd like to at these meetings. So how are we going to change to accommodate that?
The latter, discussing what are the board's goals may be in private, may violate open meeting.
Well, it's still an open meeting. It's not. It's still an open meeting. Or it'll still be an open meeting.
The retreat.
Yes, it'll still be an open meeting. The public can come, it just wouldn't necessarily be broadcast.
Which I think would be fine. I think any follow-on discussions to that would need to be.
Okay. The point is for us to be able to communicate without having legal documents or other things that are, that are constraining us in a more relaxed format and environment, and to, to make that the focus of what's going on, is that, that's the discussion, that's what we want to figure out. How are we going to work together as a board? How are we going to make sure we're clear on our goals? How are we going to accomplish our goals? What changes do we need to make to make that happen?
So I think, I like this idea of the retreat, separate, casual, moderated, all that good stuff. I think that from a timeline perspective, finding a weekend when all five board members and Bob and a reporter and a mob, yes.
Wakefield did it on a Wednesday night, so it's not automatically a weekend, just so you know.
Or finding a day before holidays.
Yeah, I think it's, Wakefield planned this for some time. Ideally, maybe you'd like to have the discussion as soon as possible, but practically, October through January is the busiest time for a lot of functions of government.
And then we hit the winter.
We'll do what you can, you know, we'll do what we can, but.
Right.
So I don't, I don't want to, I would be careful here, because I like the idea and I, and I don't want to hoo-poo it. I just, I'm a little sensitive to the timeline that we're trying to operate on.
You talked about potentially adding a Tuesday before year-end. What if we did that, and its purpose was the retreat?
We actually have one.
Yeah.
Bob, right?
The first Tuesday of December has, has got other agenda items, but I, maybe we could add more. I haven't looked at it. It is not a budget meeting.
It's December third, correct?
Correct. Yeah. That's licenses and liquor licenses, two hearings, very short. Facilities Department presentation on industry improvements and HR on employee attraction and retention.
So Bob, I.
It's possible that both of those could be moved to the budget presentations, but they're not going to be an hour-long or a forty-five-minute-long discussion. So it's your choice.
So Bob, I have here meetings, and my calendar may be out of date, but I have meetings for us December third, fourth, tenth, and eleventh.
Correct.
Okay. But the fourth, tenth, and eleventh are all the budgets.
Correct.
Is there a reason why we're not meeting on the week of the seventeenth?
I'd have to look at a calendar, it just gets close to the holidays.
It is, I mean, it is. It's the, it's exactly a week before Christmas.
Past attendance of the board tends to dwindle as we get close to holidays.
Okay. So, but it sounds like the third already has agenda items that are administrative in nature that we need to tackle, so.
It's, it's the board's choice. There's no magic about them happening that night, but it seems sensible to do it before the budget presentations, but it's your choice. They could happen in January, there's no magic about that.
So the only thing that, that gives me pause here is that John's not part of this conversation?
Mm-hmm.
And I would very much like to hear his take on this before we decide to take a course of action.
John, when you're watching this.
He's already at your house.
So.
You know, you might, as I'm looking at your next meeting on the twenty-ninth, if tax classification goes faster, we have, I don't think we have to advertise a hearing for the PTTF stuff, so that'll change. I'm sure you can get an hour on that agenda to continue this discussion with John in the room at least. But the safety stuff, we're going to talk about Haverhill Street. There's no actual, to my knowledge, there's no actual votes you need to take on safety improvements. We're going to give you an update on Haverhill Street and have a very complicated discussion on downtown parking that I'll simplify by just saying we want to delete the current rules and start all over. I've had this discussion with Vanessa, so we don't really have to take a lot of time to do that, other than to show you how horrible it is now. So I am pretty comfortable that you can squeeze at least an hour into that night without a lot of trouble, as long as classification doesn't go for ninety minutes.
Can I respectfully ask my fellow members to see if we can knock things out in advance with Victor, answer any questions that we already know we have been done?
I do like that, and I'm guilty of doing things last minute, as Caitlin protested. But I need to change my behavior, and I think if we all did that ahead of time, it's hard. You get it Thursday and your natural reaction is, "Sunday nights," or something like that.
Yeah, Sunday night is a great time to get it done, I would say personally.
But, but if we, if, you know, if we could try to do it earlier and send out questions, have our questions answered. I did that. I sent some questions to Bob on, on the, the policy changes to licensing. And then, of course, we even discussed them tonight. But, right, as you get, get those questions answered before we come into the meeting.
All right.
We might be able to go through it faster.
Hold for all two of them. So, as far as the tax, so, so looking forward to the October 29th meeting, so that we can include John. Bob?
Mm-hmm.
I see the new EDC here with no time allocated to it. Will you two be...
Yeah, which one are you looking at? Because I mentioned to Mark and Andy that I've actually moved that to November, but not in time for your packet. They wanted to do it in November.
Okay, great. Perfect. All right, so that's all.
So, the onboarding manual could probably go to any night, respectfully. Tax classification and safety improvements are two agenda items that should get discussed.
No, we can keep those there.
And I'd wrap the downtown parking and the depot stickers under the safety improvements.
Okay.
So, that's an hour and a half.
So, all, all of those require staff input, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, why don't we front-load the meeting with those?
Okay.
And once we get through the depot parking, we will shift to having this conversation, essentially again, with John present. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Oh, and I'm sorry. By the way, I should have mentioned this during my report. We do finally have an applicant for the school committee, so there will be a reason to meet. We still can't find the location. John is tasked with finding it because the library didn't have one, and we have trick-or-treaters in this building, so you won't get near it. So, it's going to be at a school to be announced. Again, 5:30 next Wednesday is the likely time. I'll let you know as soon as I know.
Great.
The building our community event at RPL is canceled.
This Thursday night is canceled. Correct.
Okay. All right. So, we've tackled, sort of, we sort of morphed from goal-setting priorities to future agendas. So, now we move on to minutes.
Can I ask a question? Because this, this was asked in the past. Do you want to discuss at some point whether you want to have subcommittees as a legal structure as opposed to one member that doesn't have to post meetings?
So, my inclination is, so I would recommend that we leave the existing subcommittees that we've created, but that moving forward as we identify projects, that one person take the lead. They can do fact gathering from other members, being very careful not to deliberate, and then that one individual can then present to the board. We seem to be more productive when retaining some approach.
Yeah, certainly.
But let's, I would suggest leaving the existing subcommittees because I, it feels disingenuous to...
Yeah. But I think we're going to discuss the subcommittees with John and see if they are still, if you want to keep them as the goals of this board.
Yes, we can, we can tackle that for the 29th. Right, 29th. All right. So, minutes. Now, I had some, Andy had some. They should all be in this packet from tonight.
I have that one.
So, thank you. So, Andy, the 6:25, I'll take these one at a time. The 6:25 minutes weren't in this packet?
No, they weren't in previous.
They weren't. I believe we already voted on this.
Maybe it was just on the same email, so I was...
Yeah. Can we confirm whether those minutes were, the 6:25 minutes were already voted on?
Yeah, I can go back and look.
Okay.
I'll check in later.
Yeah, you can check if I wanted they were voted on.
Yeah, I'll see if I can.
So, let's, let's table the six, and Andy's 6:25 minutes while we verify whether or not those were already approved, and we'll move to the 7, 9 minutes. All right?
My recollection, sorry, my recollection is that Andy and Caitlin were going to go back and watch the video.
I think that was the 7, 9.
The 7, 9, yeah, right. So, did you end up coming up with, like, is it, are these updated for back for...
Nope. So, these were Andy's original.
Original.
That he wanted to change, and I wanted to go back and make sure something was right. So, I'm fine with everything that he wrote except for one sentence that I, I did not, not in the video, so I did not, not get in there. But, so, it was under bullet point number two, and in his rewrite, where it says, "Town council stated that we have to have a hearing to remove them." That was the only thing that I never heard specifically get stated at that meeting. Everything else I'm fine.
At the, in the video?
At that meeting. If it was said, because I know you were stating prior meeting, I don't know if it was in the prior meeting, but at this specific meeting, it was not just that one sentence was, I would take.
That's, that's fine with me. I, I tried to look through the video and make it as accurate as possible, but, but let's move on.
Okay.
So, but would you take out then the following sentence?
No, I still think it makes sense with that following sentence. I just think the, the statement about the hearing to remove them, because they were still talking about a charter challenge.
Okay.
No?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Because the first, she's, I agree with Caitlin. The second sentence talks about the charter challenge, and then...
So, as a point of clarification, first sentence, Mr. Friedman's on existence with similar situation two years ago.
Yep, that's fine.
That's fine. In September 2017, people noted. That one's fine. At the time, the select were decided to stick to appointments. The situation we're removing, is the town council stated that, okay. And then the one that follows that?
That's fine.
Is also fine?
Yes.
All right, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with those one.
Okay. So, and we're all fine with number one?
Yes.
Great. All right. I also had some edits to this particular meeting. Mine are on page seven of tonight's packet. I copied the section so that you have a point of reference. So, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down. I would suggest replacing with the sentence button. Item number one.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's important.
Okay. Ken?
Okay.
Okay. So, that one. Any other edits for 7, 9? Andy, she's got edits?
For 7, 9.
Not for 7, 9. Okay, I see yours for 8, 27. All right. So, 7, 9 is done. Can we have a motion? Oh, Bob?
Well, if you're going to go one at a time, well, wait, I just found minutes I wanted you to sit.
Yeah, let's do them one at a time.
And they say final on them, which means I have to go in and change that.
Yep.
Move to accept the minutes of 7, 9, 2019 as amended.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor? Great.
Excellent.
Okay. Next, we have...
August 6.
August 6.
I didn't receive any more than...
I was not present for that meeting, so I have no edits. Did anybody else have edits that presented in advance? Okay, great. Just as for information, because I was not present, I will abstain from this one. Do I, do we have a motion?
Move to accept the minutes of 8, 6, 2019 as written.
Second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
So, 3, 0, 1.
Yeah. Force habit. Okay. All right. Now, to the meeting minutes for 8, for August 27th. I also had edits for this one. Did they not make it into the packet?
Yeah, they are.
Oh, I get it. Okay. Yep, they're in order. I follow.
I think I did the order of the minutes.
Yep. All right. So, Anne, you had some edits.
Yes. And one of my edits offers an alternative correction to yours.
Okay.
I had two suggestions that were, or two suggestions that were relative to the liquor violation, and then one that was relative to the police chief process.
So, I am fine with all three of yours. And so, for Anne's first one regarding the police chief process, let's use that in lieu of my number two. Okay?
Your number two.
Yep. And I'm fine with your two and three. Any other? No? Okay.
Okay.
For, on page nine of this document, my number one, um, did I do that backwards?
That's what you...
No, that was, it's, it's, there's, oh, wait, is there a redundant?
What is the sentence?
Yeah, there is this redundant. All right. So, I would suggest, so my number one, oh, that's space. So, my number one still stands?
Yeah.
Are they all comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Any other edits to the eight? Oh, I had other edits to eight, sorry.
Can I ask a question on your number one? Is the number one thing you're replacing or what you're adding? I just wasn't clear.
That whole paragraph should replace that whole paragraph. The first sent, the first sent part, uh...
On page nine is what you're adding?
Yes, or changing. So, item number one will replace the sentence indicating.
Bracket. So, is, is the correction, should that be noting, not nothing?
Yeah, that's what I'm reading. That's the change, right?
Yeah.
Um, yes, the rest of it is all the same. It's just I couldn't, yeah, it's a PDF, so I couldn't copy and paste it if we take...
She has, she has a period after task and then starts another sentence.
Okay. All right. And then on the last page...
Fine. Fine, yeah.
Anne?
I don't really remember, so I, it's specifically, so that's a...
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes of 8, 27, 2019 as amended.
Do we have a second? For 8, 24 or 8, 27?
8, 27.
8, 27.
8, 27, okay. Is there a second?
Yours, okay. Oh, 8, 27, I got it. Sorry.
And now, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. September 10th.
Nor did I.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Great. Motion?
Motion to accept the minutes of 9, 10, 2019 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. September 24th. These are the ones Andy circulated in advance, so if you can take a look at what he wrote.
Very short edits.
So, Andy, to clarify, are the sections that are underlined the edits?
It, it, it highlights the reason for the edit. For example, the first one, ZBA to approve, it replaces, the original sentence said that they were going to approve them, the Terre-Laye project at the next meeting. But that's what I first stated and then corrected myself. It'll be the meeting after the next, which is October 9th. The original, the original...
I don't, I don't know what, I can't remember what you said in the meeting. It's the board of, it's called the Board of Appeals. You corrected it to say Board, you corrected...
Assessors. That was, that was a problem with doing this last minute. It's Board of Appeals. You're right. I apologize. It's not the ZBA.
Right.
It's the Board of Appeals. So, so, friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
Okay. And then, and then I did say October 9th, not their next meeting. And it's not that big, big of a deal now, but it's, it was incorrect. And, and, but I can see how Caitlin thought that because that was the first thing I said.
So, the only, so I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. The third one, did you re-watch the video? Because I don't remember this.
Uh, yes.
Yes, you did.
Replace, he would like to attend. Yeah, I specifically asked the board, and people, I think Mark slowly nodded his head and then others slowly nodded and said, "Yeah, yeah."
The slow nod of people.
Yeah.
The after 10 o'clock nod.
I promised not to do any big deals. We're going to, I went today, actually, and I did not make any deals. Good point. We're quiet.
It is 10:30.
It is.
I'm fine with all of this, including the friendly amendment. Do you have anybody else?
Should it be Mr. Doxer? I don't know.
Doxer explained.
Yes, it should be Mr. And have you, can you send this, please, as a word document to Caitlin so she doesn't have to rewrite all this?
She has it.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Yes, but hang on, I got to get the date correctly. Move to accept the minutes of 9, 24, 2019 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Great. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Mark?
You're going to really hate me again. So...
You're the chair.
You can stop me. But didn't we say at the beginning of the meeting that we wanted to discuss the issues related to the Rec Committee, one specific to John's note and any other things that were on there? I don't know that we can actually vote to take that because it wasn't...
We can't.
Okay. But I'm just concerned that there are a number of items that are on the agenda, and it sounds like we're not, the communication path maybe isn't as good as it should be.
So, that's fine. I'm willing to take this up. I think that my recommendation would be, Andy and I are both liaisons. If you have concerns, you send it to one of us, and one of us attends, or both of us can attend the next recreation meeting, or reach out, and, or maybe we reach out to the chair instead in advance. Say, these have come up. Would you consider talking about them in your next meeting?
And we can certainly follow up on John's comments because they're public.
Yeah.
That way, it puts it as a request. It puts it squarely in their court, which is where it does need to be, as far as how we proceed. Because there may very well be priorities that we have that are separate from what they have, and we don't know what those are at this point.
Yeah. The only comment would be, they, they seem to be landing on our lap.
Yes.
And I think we need to address that.
Yeah. We, we can have that discussion when doing the...
I would want to tread carefully there.
Yeah.
Just throwing that out there.
Understand. I just think it, it's a discussion that should take place. I mean, if we're being asked to do things we can't do, that's not very helpful. On the other hand, if the, it's a group that reports to us, I would imagine we should be able to have some influence at least in the discussions.
Let's tread carefully there. Let's tread carefully there.
Yeah.
All right, so, noted.
From the perspective of getting back to people, people are coming to us with concerns. We need to be able to respond to them.
Well...
Just so you're all aware, because you wouldn't actually know this, the school committee received the same amount. They've not had a meeting since, so they've not addressed them.
So, if you have concerns specifically that you'd like to have us discuss with recreation or ask them to put on their future next agenda, send it to either Andy or myself, but not both of us, please. And I'll reach out to John and let him know that he can do that as well.
And we'll have John's...
Oh, we have John's letter.
And you and I can act on that, or, you know, go have a discussion with them. But I agree, tread carefully, this is...
Okay. Now, do I have a motion?
To adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?